Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our March 28, 2023 City Council meeting. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the City Council and according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the City Council during this and future remote meetings will be lead by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there's a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. I'd like to read our non-discrimination statement opener for City Council meetings. It's the finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. I'd like to announce the names of the City Councilors that are on the call. My name is Val Gilman. I'm the Ward Four City Councilor and I'm the Council President. Next, I'd like to introduce Jason Groh at Large Counselor, Scott Memard, Ward One City Council Counselor, Tony Gross at Large Counselor, Jeff Worthley at Large Counselor, Frank Majota, Ward Three City Counselor, Jamie O'Hara at Large Counselor, Tracy O'Neal, Ward Two City Counselor, and Sean Nolan, who is a Vice President of the City Council and also Ward Five City Counselor. Good evening, Sean. And I'd also like to introduce members of city staff. First of all, to my left is Joanne Sinos, our City Clerk. We're at the Harbor Master.
Text, Val, we can't hear.
Can we hear? Is everything okay? And we also have Chad Johnson.
Hold on.
We have Chad Johnson, our Assistant Harbor Master. We have Kenny Costa, who is our Auditor. We have Jill Cahill, who is our Chief Administrative Officer. We have John Dunn, who is our CFO. And we have TJ Shimataro, who is our Harbor Master. I think that is all. Let me just take a quick look to see if there's anyone else on city staff that is here. I know Senator Tar, Mayor Verga, did I introduce you?
Senator Tar's here.
I don't think I did. Mayor Verga is on the call. Let's see. Who else? Oh, PM Toby, who is the Director of Communications and Constituent Services.
Melissa Gillis.
Melissa Gillis, who is our Administrative Assistant to the Mayor.
And Melissa Prince.
Oh, Sarah Prince, who is on the School Committee. I think that is it. Former City Council President Steve LeBlanc, John McCarthy, former member of the Council, former Police Chief. So, and Ed Conley, who is our so I think we're ready to move to our next order of business.
Oral communications.
Before we do that, I'd like to ask Counselor Nolan if you would do the moment of silence for Jerry O'Neal. I'd like you to lead that, if you would. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. We lost a really good one in the last week and with Jerry O'Neal, who has done so much for the community, not just Magnolia, but in general, with the school department, working with school, with athletics, and all his services to our country. It's sad to see him go. It was always a pleasure to see him at all times walking with his wife around the town. And I just think that we really should recognize everything he's done in silence because that's the way he worked, was just to do things and to do things right in quiet.
So Counselors, let's have a moment of silence for Jerry O'Neal. Thank you, Counselors. Thank you, Counselor Nolan. Next order of business, Madam Clerk, is oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the Council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency for the Office of the Mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the City Council. The person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. And tonight, we would ask that Counselor Groh, who was first on the roll call, would do the timing. So is there anyone in as disciplined tonight that would like to speak to our Council for up to three minutes? Mary Ann, if you would introduce yourself and your address, and you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann Elbouchet, 93 Monklin Avenue. I notice every week when you you read the little brief before you start, you say, "No individual shall be denied equal opportunity." And I have to say, in the Zoom session, those who are on this side of the screen feel denied in the sense that we don't have the same opportunity to see who is on the meetings. It would be great to have access to to know who in the public is also watching these meetings. And I feel that we are denied that that service. And I don't think that it's fair to, if we were in-house at City Hall, we would know who and how many, although you do state every once in a while, there are 23 people on the call, there are 56 people on the call. We don't know who is on that call. And I feel that it does a disservice to the public that they do not know who is on the call. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to our Council for up to three minutes for any matter that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The next order of business is confirmation of new appointments.
I'd like to ask Counselor Nolan to take the lead in doing the confirmations of this new appointment.
So I believe we have Brian Clark for the unexpired term on the Waterways Board. Brian, you here tonight?
I am. Can you hear me?
Hey, Brian, how you doing?
Good, thank you. Hello, everyone.
If you could just tell the Council a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be involved with the Waterways Board, that'd be excellent.
Yeah, as I told the the at the meeting the other evening, we've been a part of the community here since about 2016. I certified prosthetist orthodist. I work at the Coming Center for Cornell Prosthetics and Orthotics and Prosthetics. I make artificial limbs and braces, medical business. My wife and I, my wife's a physical therapist. And we raise our kids in upstate New York and Saratoga County. And then our kids started to come to college here. My daughter went to Gordon and graduated in 2018. And my sons, our younger brothers, played lacrosse at Endicott. So we became addicted to driving Route 90 from Albany and watching lacrosse games and just really fell in love with the area. We actually bought a condominium in Magnolia where I'm sitting now in my house, actually. But in that, in Magnolia, we bought a condo. And my daughter lived in that, and that's a little condo on Lexington Avenue. And we just, every weekend, we're here and we just became a part of the, you know, started making more friends here than we did in upstate New York. So I've always been a boater. This, I mean, I was in, my resume as a Navy officer after college, I went to the University of Tennessee. I was a a pre-med engineering student who changed his mind by working in the hospitals for years as an orderly. And I just, the Navy kind of grabbed me and said, let's let's become a submarine officer. And so I did that for first part of my career, for my life, I guess, as a, right out of college. And, you know, I was stationed in San Diego. My wife and I really got used to the water and I've already spent around the water. So so kind of fast forward, in 2020, we were fortunate enough, after a long search, to find a home that we could afford in Magnolia, which everyone here understands is kind of a challenge anywhere these days. So we purchased a home and then figured we needed jobs and and we, you know, God just kind of opened up the heavens and dropped this house on us. And so now I'm located on Lake Road. We sold our condo, so I'm I'm just, I'm near Sean's father's house, actually. And I got to know some people around town and I was, I was honored to be nominated for the Ward. I have a boat. I have a Grady White, a 20-year-old Grady White, which I've had for a year now. So I'm going from boating on lakes for 20 years to to the ocean. And it was a great year and I'm looking forward to spending more time on the water. So I just, I'm enjoying being part of the community. Again, I work close by in Beverly at the Coming Center and I see patients all over in hospitals and nursing homes fitting limbs. And that's kind of my story. So my wife and I are happy to be here. You'll see her. She's out there walking her yellow lab around Shore Road right now, probably. And so I know she is. So you'll see her around town. And I'd like to answer any questions if you have any.
Excellent. Thank you, Brian. I really appreciate you stepping forward. Is there any Counselor questions? All right, seeing none. Brian, thank you for stepping up. It's important to have a person from our community on the Waterways Board. And with your Navy experience, I'm really happy to support you tonight. So with that being said, we'll read the motion. On a month, a motion by Counsel Majota, seconded by Counselor O'Hara, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that City Council appoint Brian Clark, fulfilling an unexpired term to the Waterways Board, term to expire 2/14/24, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel Worthley. Is there discussion, Counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Groh?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes, and welcome to our community, Brian.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes, and thank you, Brian.
Counsel O'Hara? Counsel O'Hara just gave a thumbs up. He's muted. Okay, he's muted. Can you unmute yourself, Counsel O'Hara? You can't. Okay. So we all saw the thumbs up. Counsel O'Neal?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes, and thank you, Brian.
Counsel Gilman, yes. And Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Yes, as have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Counsel O'Hara just unmuted. Oh, Counsel O'Hara?
He said yes.
You just said yes. Thank you. Welcome, Brian. Appreciate it. Next order of Madam Clerk.
The next order of business is the Consent Agenda.
Counselors, would anyone like to remove any matter off the Consent Agenda? Someone like to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Counsel Groh, seconded by Counsel Worthley. Roll call vote. Counsel Groh? Counsel Majota? Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara? Counsel Gross?
Yeah.
Yes, as have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The next order of business is old business, a correction of a Scrivener's error on the March 6, 2023 Ordinance and Administration Meeting Minutes.
And I'm going to turn that over to Counsel Nolan, but I just wanted to mention that this matter was added to the agenda this afternoon and it was not reasonably anticipated in that the March 6, 2023 ONA minutes previously approved needed to be amended to correct a Scrivener's error. So Counselor Nolan, as Chair of ONA, I'll ask you to make the motion to amend.
I'd like to motion to amend the correction of a Scrivener's error on March 6, 2023, the Ordinance and Administration Minutes. For background, we had referenced the Budget and Finance Committee on the ONA reference, which was a little bit confusing because we actually had two-thirds of the committee from the Budget and Finance there at the time. So it worked its way into the paperwork, but I do want to assure that that was an error and that it should have stated that it was for a vote by the Ordinance and Administration Committee.
Okay, so Counselors, on page 13, we're deleting Budget and Finance, we're referencing inserting ordinances and administration. Is there a second to Counsel Nolan's motion? I think I heard Counsel O'Hara. So we have a motion from Nolan and seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Roll call vote. Counsel Groh?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neal?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Yes, as have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the Budget and Finance standing committee report of March 23.
So Counsel Memard, you have the floor. BNF Chair.
Yes, we have one item from Budget and Finance Committee for your consideration tonight, other than the public hearing on the police station renovation, which we'll get into very shortly, I hope. And we unanimously approved the Budget and Finance Committee, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council accept various cash donations under Mass General Law 4453A, supporting the Council on Aging in a total amount, aggregate amount of $1,240. And this is from the following members within our community. Joanne Libero, Mary Ann Shula, Ron and Joan Gilson, Maureen Mascola, Marie Mueller, Marilyn Grant, Jerry Favolaro, Fred Cowan, Joel Crocker Monroe, Mary Benham, Norma LaCepala, Norma Silva, Don Cutting, Elizabeth McDonough, Claire Tomlinson, Marilyn Grant again, Jerry Favolaro again, Kathleen Bach, Connie Condon, and Jose Molidno, with a total again of $1,240 for the senior center. And I so move.
Second.
Motion was made by Counsel Memard, I believe it was. Counsel Nolan? Yes?
Counsel Crowe.
Counsel Groh, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Counsel Groh?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neal?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. And Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Yes, as have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the Ordinance and Administration Standing Committee report of March 20?
Counsel Nolan? You are muted.
We have no items before us tonight for this.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The Planning and Development Standing Committee report of March 22.
Counsel Groh?
Thank you very much, Counsel President. Just, we have no action items. I just wanted to alert folks to two events that we've approved road closures for. May 13 coming up, the Gloucester Education Foundation Arts Festival. It's going to be around downtown area, City Hall, and various other locations. There will be food trucks there, so it's going to be a party. And then the Magnolia Farmers Market will be beginning on Lexington Avenue on June 4, running through the summer, missing both July 4 and Labor Day weekends, but resuming and finishing up on October 1, 2023. Again, that's on Lexington Avenue from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. on Sundays. So if you're interested in vegetables, that's the place to be. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the first scheduled public hearing, Public Hearing 2023-008, Loan Order 2023-001, Loan Authorization Request in the Amount of $19 million, $300,000 to pay costs associated with the renovation of the Gloucester Police Station and Courthouse facility.
I'd like to open the public here. And we'd like to hear from the administration. Who would like to go first?
I will, Madam President. Yeah, Mayor Verga, Greg, I know who I am, Greg Verga, Mayor Gloucester. I'm going to start with just a quick introductions listed as attendees right now. So the list I'm about to give are people who may be able to answer questions as we move along or who will be helping me out with the presentation. As attendees, we have Neil Joyce and Scott Lubker from our owners, they're our owners, project manager. From Doran Whittier, we have Brad Door and Chip Heidkamp. WT Rich, we have John Rich, John McCarthy, former Police Chief and member of the Building Committee. Ed Conley, current Police Chief. Chris McQuade, who is on the Building Committee and works for the court system. And then as attend, sorry, panelists, Jill Cahill and John Dunn. So this project, as you may recall, has been on and off your agenda for the last few months. The holdup we had was, we were trying to find out what kind of commitment we could get from the courts. Now, this project began about five years ago, April 2018 was the first loan order that came through the City Council. And at that time, they were looking at HVAC upgrades and a window project. The project began to balloon as it, as the scope began to creep, it also invoked a lot of ADA requirements. So when I got here as mayor in January of 2022, it had been up to about $12 million. And that's when I said, hey, what's going on here? Do we have a commitment from the courts that they're going to stay? Because the last thing we wanted to do is have a nice, beautiful renovated courthouse and no court. So we started communications with the courts. And at first, I was looking for just a written commitment, a letter saying, yeah, we're not going anywhere. But we soon began to ask, would you be willing to help pay for this project? Because at that time, it had gone up to the roughly $19 million that we're at now. And after lots of negotiations between the court system, DCAM, and John Dunn and Suzanne Egan, we did indeed get an updated lease. The original lease was, I believe, a dollar a year for 99 years. It had been modified in the 90s to include about a $10,000 a year line item for maintenance issues. We are now looking at a, over the next 30 years, about $5.2 million contributing towards the the rent, which will contribute towards the debt payments. So once we had that in hand, signed, sealed, and delivered, that's when we brought it back to the Council, which is now before you. And I feel very confident and positive about this project now that we have that commitment from the courts. We have a building that was, goes back to about 1971, '72. It's in a building that is a victim of deferred maintenance, like many of our properties in the city. This is the opportunity to make up for lost time. Some of the questions that have been raised over the last several months is, you know, why aren't we looking at a combined police-fire station? Couple reasons. First of all, a combined police-fire station would not be police-fire and court. And secondly, we don't have a location for said police-fire station. The police station currently on Main Street is owned outright by the city. And this project can be done within 18 months. And how is a new police courthouse? If we were to start from scratch and start to try to find a spot, first of all, we need to find a spot. Secondly, we need to start this process all over. And we're probably looking at one or more years before we even are ready to get through the design phase and probably another two to three years after that, before we're even ready to have a ribbon cutting and start to utilize this. I would say by then, the courthouse is gone and the, we're behind the eight ball. So with this court, this commitment from the courts, I think that we are in a good position to move forward. We have a few other capital projects in the pipeline that are going to be staring us down in the near future. One is our 100-year-old in 2026, 100-year-old fire station and work needed at the DPW yard. So this is a time to attack the police station with this relatively small amount of money. New construction would be about $60 million roughly. I'll let Brad Door from Doran Whittier give a little more, put a little more meat on the bones for that one versus this $19.3 million. I think it's important that we keep the courts here. It serves not just Gloucester, but our surrounding cities, surrounding towns. It is important that our citizens have access to the courthouse and our more, our most vulnerable citizens have access to justice. And there are obviously a lot of other benefits to having the court and the police station in the downtown location. So with that, I'd like to hand it off to, I don't think Senator Tar's on the call yet, but
Yes, he is. Senator Tar's here. So Senator Tar, Brad Door, and Ed Conley.
Okay, so with that, I'll hand it off to Senator Tar. I should mention that it was thanks to the efforts of Senator Tar and Raffranti that we're able to connect with the courts and get this this deal done. And so with that, Senator Tar, through the chair, take it away.
Thank you. Welcome, Senator. Do you have your camera, Chance?
I am trying to figure out how to turn the camera on. I do not see myself.
You're a panelist, so you should be able to
Yeah, I thought I would be able to.
Love to see you, but if we can't, we'll have to hear you.
You know, there's probably an interesting punchline in there, Madam President, but I won't pursue it. So rather than take a valuable time and trying to figure out the audiovisual component of this Zoom meeting on my end, I will just, if I can indulge you for a few minutes, relative to the matter that now pans before the Council. And I also do so bringing the best wishes of Representative Ferrante as well. But Madam President, I want to follow on what the mayor said. And from my perspective, we are certainly at a pivotal point with regard to the future of this courthouse being in Gloucester. And that is because obviously we've reached the point where significant renovations are needed. And the only location where the courthouse, in my humble opinion, could and should remain is on Main Street in Gloucester. And over the years, I think all of you know, particularly over the last probably 10 or 15 years, there have been a couple of proposals to be able to close this court and relocate it. And I think that would be incredibly unfortunate and disadvantageous for the people of Cape Anne. Having the court on Main Street is something that both Representative Ferrante and I have held as a priority for a very long time. And we have consistently worked to be able to keep the doors open and to keep the facility on Main Street. And that's important for a number of reasons. Number one, it's important to our criminal justice system that we have access to the courts for our local police departments so that they don't have to travel outside of the community to be able to pursue justice. But it's also important for defendants and defendants being able to have access to their day in court and have it be here locally. And it's also important, Madam President, for all of the attendant organizations locally that support the operations of the court in a whole host of ways, whether that be for juvenile diversion or whether it be for support programs that sometimes help to divert folks in other ways from the criminal justice system and in a different way. But in addition to that, Madam President, it's important to remember that the court also serves a number of civil functions, from businesses being able to pursue small claims to individuals being able to pursue small claims. And being able to do that on Main Street, on Cape Anne, is very important. We also move to other areas that are critically important, whether it be someone who is seeking a protection order, a so-called 209A, or other kind of restraining order, to folks who may need to seek or be the subject of petitions under Section 12 or Section 35 relative to their own well-being or a matter of substance use disorder. All of these things take place in our local court. And it's important that the court continue to be integrated into the community with a physical presence in the community and with the ability to serve the community without transportation. and with the ability to serve the community without transportation becoming an obstruction or an impediment. And so keeping the court on Main Street is absolutely critical. Now, along the lines of those lines, it's also important that we have a police station that meets the needs of those who make sacrifice to defend us and protect our safety twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And this project has the benefit of accomplishing both of those objectives. Now, with regard to the posture of the court on a going-forward basis, as the mayor did mention, there is a ninety-nine-year lease that has been in effect. But I think all of us consider it to be important to reinforce that. And particularly if the city is going to invest nineteen point three million dollars, it's important that we get commitment that the court will continue to operate in its present location. And that commitment in this case comes in the form of a modification of the lease, as the mayor has referenced. And not only a modification of the lease in language, but also the payment of approximately five and a half million dollars from the trial court indicating the court's commitment to keeping the doors of the court open and having the court remain vibrant and viable. And so I do think we are at a very important point here in terms of being able to preserve the court, provide those who defend us in law enforcement and protect our rights and having them have a facility that's appropriate to their efforts. And being able to do so in a partnership between the state and the city. And I do want to say, Madam Mayor, that a tremendous number of individuals have been involved in this effort. Certainly, the mayor and his team, some of whom you'll hear from tonight. But also the presiding justice of the Gloucester District Court, Judge Patton, and many others who have joined in this conversation to ensure that this important resource stays in the community and remains viable and does so in a building that is suitable for its needs and for what it represents. So with that, I will offer my gratitude for being able to speak for a few moments tonight. I think that was probably enhanced by you not being able to see me on camera, but no matter what, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'll remain on the line in case there are questions.
Thank you, Senator. So glad that you're here tonight.
Well, Mayor. Madam Chair, if we could go to Brad Door and, Madam Clark, they, I don't think that they're able to turn on their cameras.
Not as an attending, unfortunately.
Okay, sorry. We tried to make it easier so they weren't on the screen the whole time, and unfortunately, that means you, you won't see their faces.
Yeah, because I tried to, there's no option. When I brought him in to have them on camera, they had to be promoted to a panelist, and I'm not able to do that.
We tried. We tried to simplify.
Thank you. So Brad, you have the floor. Welcome. And if you'd introduce yourself, that would be great.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, counselors. My name is Brad Door. I'm a principal with Doran Whittier Architects. We've been involved in a number of projects throughout the city. Like Senator Tara, I'm happy to be, you know, not have my, my photo up there that you have to look at, but I, I was asked tonight to give you a little bit of background in terms of our involvement in this project and maybe a little history. Some of this has already been covered by the mayor. But our involvement really started in two thousand nineteen, and as the mayor suggested, originally, we were brought in to look at the building, understand where some of the deficiencies were, and to look at initially, you know, a potential window replacement project because the windows were leaking badly. Nothing's changed. They're still leaking badly. And so when we looked at trying to figure out how we were going to remedy that, it became evident right away that because when you look at the windows, you'll know that there's residential air conditioning units that are currently in those windows that those would need to be replaced, right? Or swapped out because residential air conditioning units really isn't what you would want to go and pursue as part of, you know, any type of renovation project because they're very inefficient. So we started to investigate, you know, what we would do to modify the HVAC system. And, you know, as you would suspect on a building that's fifty years old, there are a number of deficiencies there, and that's normal. You know, this is a twenty-four-seven building. It gets a lot of use. After fifty years, right, it's, it's expected that a lot of these systems would either have to be upgraded or replaced. So when we looked at what we would have to do to upgrade the HVAC system, right, we, we in turn would have to go and upgrade the electrical system, not only but because it was deficient in and of itself, but also we would need that additional power to be able to kind of support the HVAC system. So now we've, we've looked at, you know, a couple of the major systems right to the building, and when we start to go and, and, you know, get a number of these systems and add cost to the project in the existing building code, chapter thirty-four, we start to trigger certain thresholds associated with accessibility, fire protection, et cetera. And then those systems in turn also need to be upgraded. So we're gonna have to go now and make accessibility improvements to bring that into compliance with the code as well as the fire protection, both sprinklering the building as well as bringing the fire alarm system up to code. So just like, you know, peeling an onion, as I said at BNF the other night, what ends up happening is we're doing, you know, a significant amount of intervention into the building. We're having to go and move some walls to make the accessibility work. We're gonna be doing a lot of cutting and patching, right, because of all of the different systems, right, that we're having to go and upgrade. And at that point in time, we also started to look at, because the intervention was gonna be significant, maybe it's time to go and look at some of the more functional aspects that also should be addressed, some things like going in, having appropriate women's locker rooms and bathrooms in the facility, security and safety concerns that have been asked for by the building department for a number of years. Just security and safety concerns today, right? It's a much different environment today than what we were dealing with even ten years ago. So we're really looking at, you know, glazing, you know, with the windows to have the appropriate type of glass in there that is ballistic rather than just, you know, your typical glass that you would see. So there are a number of things in addition to the courthouse functionality and some of the other things that have been mentioned by others on this call. Today, right, the project from a construction cost perspective is approximately fourteen point three million dollars. The total project cost is nineteen point three million dollars, which is what is in front of you tonight, which gives you on a dollars-per-square-foot basis about six hundred and three dollars per square foot construction and about eight hundred and thirteen dollars per square foot. And that's really the metric to use when you're benchmarking out there with other communities. And we did a lot of benchmarking, and if, if we were to go and compare that today on dollars-per-square-foot basis on construction, which is really the metric that we typically use, we, we would be well over eight hundred dollars a square foot. In fact, we just bid a job. Our firm does a number of this work throughout the Commonwealth. And it's in the high eight hundred dollars right now for that particular project. So from a renovation perspective, it seems to be fairly consistent and good value, I think, for the city of Gloucester. One thing that's really contributed, right, to price increases, as everybody is aware, of escalation over time. We've seen significant escalation over the past two or three years. And unfortunately, we don't see that trend really changing. Hopefully, the curve will flatten, but we don't see prices going down in the near term. So I think that the number that the mayor put out there early in terms of a combined public safety building to incorporate both fire and police would be in the range probably of sixty million dollars, depending on where the ultimate program landed. The last thing that I was asked to discuss was a little bit about schedule. If the committee moves this project forward, we would be ready to start as soon as, you know, next week, in fact, as soon as the paperwork gets processed, we have a construction manager on the team, which is WT Rich. I think it was mentioned earlier that the city has retained an OPM, an Owners Project Manager, which is CMS. So we've been working diligently for together for over a year, right, to get it to this point where now the project that you see in front of you tonight is where it is, and we're ready to go. It's gonna, the first thing that we would be doing is, as you notice, is to proceed for some of the early equipment because, as everybody's aware, there are a number of market conditions out there, right, that are required for us to go and get some of those long lead items into the queue as fast as we could. And then we would go and start to mobilize and start to look at dispatch relocation in about two to three months. And then we would mobilize the balance of the construction with an overall construction after that of being about eighteen months. So we've got about two years ultimately of construction. We've got a project that seems to be a good value overall for your community at nineteen point three million dollars, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So to wrap up our presentation, we have Police Chief Ed Conley. As I mentioned earlier in my presentation, we have a number of people as attendees and as panelists who stand by to answer questions when you get to that portion of the hearing. So with that.
Floor, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, City Councilors. Thank you for having me here tonight. Apologies, I can't use my camera to paint a picture. I'm sitting in my office right now. Give you that mental image. I don't think I'm here tonight. I don't think it's in dispute that the conditions of the Gloucester Police Station and courthouse are not in long need of improvement, and I'm sure Chief McCarthy, who's also on this, on this call, could elaborate on some of the various mishaps and unsanitary events and in general poor working conditions that have existed over the years. But in the four years that I've been the chief of police here, I have witnessed several of these types of incidents that our men and women, both sworn and non-sworn, have to work within on a daily basis. These, these include, just to kind of highlight a few, they include, you know, water finding its way into the roll call room, detectives' space, several officers, offices, and in the basement, breaking pipes, which recently caused damage and mold to our record storage facility. We recently had a toilet leak from the upstairs courtroom bathroom that it leaked actually directly into our hallways down here. Detainees who have access to outdated toilet systems inside the holding cells have intentionally, on occasion, clogged the toilets, resulting in contaminated flooding. What started this whole project off, in some sense, was our HVAC system, which is out of date with zero internal ventilation, other than opening a window. And we rely on residential cooling through window units currently, which is completely inefficient. The shower facilities here, which most police departments have for obvious reasons, are so decrepit as to make them not operational and certainly the locker rooms here are out of date and providing no ventilation. In terms of a, in terms of a safety standpoint, our building lacks a proper entry door control system and general access control for most important doors here. The street-level windows provide little to no protection for officers in the roll call area. Fire suppression systems are either nonexistent or out of date. The firearms slash training area on the top floor, which will not, which you'll hear shortly, will will not, the firearms live-fire range will not be coming back, but the training area itself is falling apart with tiles falling from the ceiling. And certainly we have outdated dispatch IT communication equipment and camera systems. And the reason I I picked these points specifically to bring up tonight is because every one of these will be corrected by this project, by design. So just a few more things I'd like to point out to you in terms of other improvements we expect to see from this project. They include, in our detention area, we're gonna be remodeling our existing cells to include new ventilation systems, more importantly, new modern doors, upgraded cameras, new bathroom with fixtures with remote flushing so that detainees wouldn't be able to manipulate that and resulting in flooding and improve lighting. This will also include two ADA-compliant cells, which we currently do not have, and improvements to both our female and juvenile cells. The redesigned booking area, where officers bring in arrestees to process, will now have what we refer to as a safe zone or an officer-only zone, meaning that that detainees will stay on one side of a, of a wall. You know, sort of, you think about a, any kind of, we walk up to have service at City Hall, or they'll remain on one side of that. Everything we need to do to process them does not require them to come on to the same side of that wall as the officers on. That's a significant increase in officer's safety for that area. Also, we'll be creating a secure area to conduct interviews and interrogations of people who are under arrest for serious and violent crimes such as, say, domestic violence. Currently, the practice is the detectives that are investigating that or the officers investigating, they bring them upstairs into our actual station, the workspace of our station. So it's access to dispatch access, the roll call, access to locker rooms, and they conduct interviews here. Now, it's done in a certain way to make it as safe as possible, but it's not optimal for sure. And, you know, the electronic control access to all those doors in the secure facility will increase the security because right now they don't really exist. If someone were to break away while in custody, they could simply run up the stairs and into the main police station area, which is another unsafe condition. Something that some of you who have been here, I'm sure have noticed, is a very unwelcoming entryway here at the police station. I told the story during DNF that I've told a couple of times before, when I first became the chief here and really didn't know many people and came from my first time walking into the station, I had to walk in through that entryway and stand on the one-way glass and pick up a phone and try to figure out what number to call, and no one answered, and no one came. I'm pretty sure they all knew I was there and, you know, were playing along, but it was uncomfortable. It was uncomfortable for me to be in that position. I can only imagine what it feels like for a citizen coming in who's probably already in distress over some incident to report something and have to, to kind of come through the entryway. So the new, new design will remove that outer glass barrier, will create a more inviting window and intercom system to interact with the police officers behind the glass, create an inner space here, secure a space with just inside the police station where people coming in, victims coming in with sensitive topics they want to talk about, they don't have to do that out in the hall, out in the main area. We can bring them into a secure area where they won't have access into the full police station, but it's a safe, quiet place for them to share their, their account with a police officer. We'll be moving our records access that's now currently housed within the police station to a front forward, public-facing window right near the dispatch window for convenient access to crash reports, firearms licensing in general, reports that people need. So those are some of the big improvements, particularly around safety and our interaction with the public. We will also be, as I stated earlier, redoing the training space that's on the top of the station. It was forever a live-fire range. The cost to bring that live-fire range into modern safety and HVAC standards is a lot. It's north of a million dollars. So what we chose to do in this project was, was to, first of all, clean up that area, make it usable, connect HVAC to it and make it into a training area. And then within that training area, it's a perfect location for a system that's called a Milo system. And the Milo system is a, it's a screen, like a movie screen, which we project various scenarios that we can control, our trainers control, and you have firearms, but they're not actual firearms. They're actually laser-guided handguns and rifles and shotguns, whatever, you know, whatever type of systems you have in your particular department, and you can run through these scenarios, and they're, they're typically referred to as shoot-no-shoot type scenarios, where officers need to make quick split-second decisions about using deadly force, which, of course, is the highest impact type of situation any officer could find themselves in, and certainly any community could, could find themselves in. And not to go too far down the wormhole on the science behind this, but you know, the only way that we know to train human brains to make those quick decisions and make them as accurately as we can, given a certain circumstances, low light perhaps, a lot of other noise and factors and variables, is to train that all the time. Currently, we do it twice a year during live-fire training. And of course, everybody gets it in the police academy, but it's certainly not adequate enough. This system would allow our firearms instructors, who are dispersed in most of the shifts, to access that area and actually pull officers on a quiet night and train them while they're on duty, thus, you know, saving money, training types of funds. So there's a lot more about that I won't get into. Tonight, I'm happy to answer any other questions you have. I think that about covers it for me.
So I think that concludes our major presenters, and at this point, I'd like to see if there was anyone that would like to speak in favor of this for up to three minutes. If you would raise your hand and we'll bring you in and.
Opposition first.
John, John McCarthy, welcome, and we know you, but you'll need to reintroduce yourself to us. Thank you.
That's fine. Can you hear me now?
Loud and clear, Chief.
My name's John McCarthy. I live at one thirty-one Mount Pleasant Ave. I have a lot of experience, as I just heard Chief Conley say. And I won't go into all that experience because you'd be here all night, but I do agree with what's been said tonight by all the presentists, the building does. all the presentists. The building does need to be rehabbed or rebuilt and we were getting some of these loans in when I was still in the city council a year and a half ago, and there was no talk other than a two million dollar earmark from the state. And I know we voiced concerns over the lease and whether the city should pay for the approximate thirty percent that the court takes up. This was addressed by the administration through Senator Tarr and Representative Ferrante's office, as well as the court system. And and I want to applaud him because, you know, something that's five and a half million dollars that wasn't going to be considered towards this project, and we now have a lease that ensures the court will be here. Another thing is we have the five and a half million dollars, which frees up our borrowing power, as you all know, maybe. It's a start towards replacing what the mayor had just said, that we have a hundred twenty five year old or a hundred year old fire station that desperately needs to be replaced. So I'd like to just voice my support for this project, having had a lot of years there. I think the men and women of the police department deserve this, as do the fire department going forward and DPW, but I think this is a chance for the city to get their best bang for the dollar, especially with the state kicking in and to help the local population be able to access the court and the police station. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you so much, Chief. It's nice to hear from you. Anyone else like to speak to the council for up to three minutes? In support. Sunny Robinson, welcome. And if you would state your name and address, that would be great.
Hi, everybody. It's Sunny Robinson. I live at twenty Harvard Street. I am not going to speak at length at all, but just to say how much I support this project, which certainly comes out of my twenty years of chairing the Cities Coalition for the Prevention of Domestic Abuse. I think it is extremely important that we move forward on these renovations to the police department and the court department, given what we in domestic abuse prevention expect of all of them. It's important not only for our residents who are coming forward to use those services, but for our employees, both in the police department and in the court department, to have decent services that support the conduct of seeking prevention and justice. I think it's got to be at least ten years ago that I started going to statewide hearings to try to secure the preservation of the court. I be this thirty year agreement in terms of the court staying, and I certainly advocate that this project, that this loan order go forward so we can move forward on this very needed project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sunny. We have Steve LeBlanc, our former city council president. Welcome, Steve.
Hello, councilors. Can you hear me?
Sure.
All right. I'm supporting this also, and I'm not going to go at length, but this is a service to the community that this police department provides. I'm not going to compare it to our school, but you know, we need a state of the art building. And you get a better workforce and you get a better attitude and you get just a whole better environmental service that it's going to provide. So I could support this a hundred percent. I think our police department in our city deserves this. I've been in it dozens of times, nothing bad, all in good measures. But it is very, very old and dated building and brick and mortar is hard to update, so a hundred percent I support this.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to the council for up to three minutes? In support of this loan order? Seeing none, anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, are there any communications?
There are no communications that came in by the seventy two hour deadline, but I believe the council has received two communications emails that you have that were distributed to you.
Thank you. So at this point, we're going to open the public hearing up for council questions, and we're going to start with Council Grow. And we're going to allow three minutes and Joanne will do the timing. And you'll only be timed for the time that you're asking the question, not the answer. So Council Grow, you're first on roll call tonight. So you have the floor to ask questions.
Thank you, Madam President. I only have a couple of questions, actually. One is more a logistical question on how is the court and the police department going to be operating during the renovation process of two years? Because obviously the services still need to be provided. Will the court remain in place while the renovation is going on? Will police officers, obviously, will have to deal with that as well. So how's that going to affect operations?
Thank you. Mayor Verga, hands raised.
So the courts are planning to relocate to PBD, I believe, and I guess they'll start the packing process as soon as this vote takes place, presuming it's in the affirmative. And the plan is to move the police operations upstairs to the court while we renovate the lower levels and then flip them back down to low level and work in the courts. I think in the short answer, that's pretty much it. Hope that covers what you're looking for, Council Grow.
It's fine. Yeah. And secondly, just to, only because this is yet another one of a large borrowings that we've done recently. Can John Dunn or or Kenny Costa speak to what our overall budgeting threshold, our borrowing threshold is these days and how this is impacting that?
John or Kenny?
Well, I guess, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hear me loud and clear.
All right. So Counselor, yeah, we have plenty of borrowing capacity. That is not an issue here. Again, the only issue is being able to afford it and certainly having the state, you know, be able to give us five point five, you know, more billion dollars over the next thirty years will essentially kind of, you know, cover some of that borrowing capacity. So I think we're okay. You know, unless somebody comes to me, you know, in in a couple of days, it says we have to spend twenty more billion dollars on a building, but I think we're okay.
Or say a hundred and fifty million on a sewer system or something like that.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to duck away from that for a little bit.
Don't blame you. Okay, I'm I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, next up for questions is Council Majota. You have three minutes, Counselor.
No, no, no questions for me. I think Jason Grow asked a good question where everyone's got to go in for two years. Actually, I guess my follow up question would be if people are used to going to the courtroom in Gloucester, you know, how would they be able to get to PBD if they don't have a means of transportation?
That I'm not have to say, I I'm not sure if that's been discussed in any of the previous meetings, but I would hope social services that are available in town would help those who are unable to, as well as public transit. But I I don't have a direct answer for your Council Majota.
Council Majota, if I can, Council President. We will, we, so I know Melissa Texara is on here too. The court is working on all of their outreach and we'll be working with them with the local attorneys and advocacy groups so that everyone's aware of the move and the access and so anyway, we'll make sure we address that as we go.
Thank you. Any further questions, Council Majota?
No, no questions. I can't wait to see the makeover.
Okay, excellent. Council Member.
Yes, thank you all. This group did a an excellent and very thorough presentation, but in finance committee, we went into somewhat greater depth than was summarized here tonight. So I'd like to we were all very appreciative of the presenters and the the breadth and depth of what they are preparing here. And it's clearly there's no dispute as to the need. The only question I'm hearing from constituents is a concern about how we are planning forward for ongoing maintenance and how to how and an ongoing systems replacement and whose responsibility? And how are those funded going forward so that this these improvements are properly cared for and this investment is protected?
Mayor Verga.
Yeah, I would say that the city in in recent years has done a much better job with preventive maintenance and as evidenced by West Parish School and other buildings. And so there's absolutely a concern. The last thing I want to do is basically flush nearly twenty billion dollars down the toilet. So that will be a consideration in the budget and going forward in the planning through the Public Works Department. So that is just can't have one without the other. You can't say let's vote to fund a new building and then basically repeat the history that we just had over the last forty years that led to us having to upgrade this building. So the answer to your question is yes. It looks like.
So so Mayor Verga, you're saying that the responsibility and and the city's funding will be through the city's DPW department in terms of facility maintenance for the new police station and courthouse?
Right, as it is for all the buildings, including the school buildings. As I said, Joe Cahill has your hand up, Madam President.
Sure. Our CIO, Joe Cahill.
I just want to backfill that with a little bit of a discussion that's been happening at the Capital Improvements Advisory Board since from when I was Community Development Director and continues now. DPW Director Mike Hale, we've been talking regularly because Capital Improvements Advisory asks that same question, Counselor, all the time. So we've been talking at length about a building maintenance system, right? So right now we're trying to bring as these new buildings come online, we're trying to coordinate entry systems, heating systems, cooling systems, right? So they all speak to the same thing. And then on the other end is essentially a system that you put all this information into, and instead of it being in what has traditionally been the case in most cities of our size is there's there's a guy who's worked for DPW for a hundred years and he knows, right? So we are moving towards using technology to track that. It's a big investment, both financially and time wise for DPW and a big change. But I think and and Chief McCarthy sits on the CIAB, so he's heard a bit of this. I think you will be seeing some movement in that direction in the next couple of years so that we can bring, I mean, with all these new buildings between West Parish, the new East Veterans School, this improvements, it's going to be really important that we start to automate it and and coordinate it. So the thought is there and then the question is, what's the software and how do we want to do that? But we have the right people in place between Ryan Knowles and Mike Hale and Joe Lucido and a really strong CIAB to support that. So you'll, I think you'll, you'll probably see that coming in front of you also.
As as long as we, you know, appropriate and reserve adequate funding to support those those measures.
Thank you, Jill. Appreciate that. Further questions, Council Member?
I'm glad. Thank you.
Great. Next up for questions is Council Nolan.
I think all my questions have been answered through BNF, the process of the last two years of going through this. So I don't think I really have any questions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next up for questions is Council O'Hara.
Thank you. Just as far as the the budgetary numbers, nineteen point three, what does the team have in the project for contingencies? As renovations are significantly different than new construction?
I would defer to, yeah, somebody else on the team for that one.
I believe we're, I believe we're carrying eight percent, Counselor O'Hara, which is a little bit more than what we would carry on new construction. If Neil Joyce is on the call, he can confirm that, but I think that's where we're running.
Okay, thank you. And has has there been a complete review of the building to identify? Obviously, products that we used fifty years ago might not be that healthy to deal with as far as again, and can get extremely expensive and working with it in renovations.
Yes, like all of the work that we're, you know, being involved with is is going to be code compliant, you know, it'll be new, so we won't be going back and and trying to rehab, you know, systems that are fifty years old, if that answers your question.
So Brad Door, Neil Joyce has raised his hand. He might have some an answer to this as well. Can we bring him in?
He's under Paul Griffin.
He's under Paul Griffin. Great. Welcome, Neil. Would you introduce yourself and?
Yes, Neil Joyce with Construction Monitoring Services. We are the city's OPM. We are currently carrying one point three million dollars in project contingency for this job to cover anything unforeseen. I would advise the council that the building is and actively remains an active police station and courthouse. So destructive investigation really was not possible under this scenario. So we have tried to budget that in and take that into account as we're moving forward into renovations.
Great. Thank you, Neil. Any further questions, Council O'Hara?
Yes, the chief mentioned his Milo range. Is that included in the nineteen million, the purchase of that?
Chief Conley.
I believe that question was asked at BNF and Neil, I believe your answer was that is correct. It is included.
Yes, it is.
Perfect. Thank you. All my questions are answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next up for questions is Council O'Neill.
Thank you. I just have some numbers questions. I want to make sure I have this right. The building is going to be nineteen point three million approximately. We're getting five point three million from the courthouse. And was it four million from the state? Is that a grant or is it is it four million that I hear it right? And is that a grant or a loan or what?
It actually, the math on the courthouse lease works out to be just under five point two million.
Okay.
There is no four million from the state. Senator Tarr did get two million dollars appropriated into a bond bill, but he has some work to do to get it out of that bond bill and into our checking account. But right now, what we can count on is the five point two roughly over the next thirty years through lease payments.
Thank you. And the the bond bill, will that be one big check or will that be over a period of time?
That bit. If Senator Trask is on the line, he gets that typically, I believe the money comes in a in a chunk, but.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. And I failed to mention this earlier and I should have. So a few years ago, I worked on inserting an earmark into a bond bill, a general obligation bond bill for two million dollars for the courthouse. And the reason for doing that was twofold. Number one, to try to secure some additional resources for the city, but also to secure in a bond bill another form of state commitment to the courthouse remaining, opening and and operating. As I think many on the call know, or the meeting may know and some may not, a bond bill is a two step process where the legislature authorizes the governor to borrow for certain items. But the governor must then choose to actually conduct that borrowing and distribute the proceeds from it. And so in this case, we've been through the first step, which is that we've set the stage for the administration to borrow that money and distribute it to the city. But we would still need to get the administration to agree with that. And so we are working on that, Representative Ferrante and I. I cannot give any guarantee and I do not want to create any false expectation. It is something that we will continue to pursue in the hope that we would be successful to get some or all of that authorization turned into an appropriation. And Counselor, to answer your question, if we are successful, the most likely scenario would be some or all of that two million dollars in a lump sum would be transferred to the city. And I think the next logical question would be, well, what will happen if that occurs? And it would seem to me that the city would have two options. The most likely would be to reduce the amount of borrowing that would be necessary. Or if we were too far along for that, then to be able to use those dollars for any additional costs that may arise in the project. But on these matters, I defer to John Dunn because he is far more expert than I.
John Dunn. Our CFO.
Depending on when when and if the money comes in from the state. Generally, we borrow at the very end of the project. And we will just kind of see how it works out. So we're very hopeful that Senator Tarr will be able to deliver. So we're very hopeful that Senator Tar will be able to deliver the goods. And we we very, very happy to receive them. And again, as we, you know, go into the end of the project, we will issue, you know, permanent bonding for whatever is left.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm so, Neil.
Yeah. Thank you, Senator Tar and John Dunn. Thank you. One more question. Because the building is so old, I guess this would be probably for Brad Door. Do you suspect that you'll run into asbestos? And if so, would it be safe for the police department to be upstairs while you're removing asbestos downstairs?
So we have contemplated, uh, some asbestos removal. And any areas, right, that would be subject to mitigation would be contained. And so, you know, the areas where we would actually have people working uh, would not be subject to any cross-contamination as a result of the mitigation.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, next up is Counsel Worthley. You have three minutes, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I came into this with lots and lots of questions. Um, fortunately, Counselor Memmar was able to entertain those at our Budget and Finance meeting. And I asked, I think it was twelve questions, and the answers were very satisfactory. And so it may be appropriate for me to ask additional questions. I I take this seriously and our recommendation was unanimous. So I don't have new questions since Thursday, but thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next up is me, but I'll ask Counsel Gross to um, to ask his questions first.
Well, like Counsel Worthley, all my questions were answered at B and F. So, um, they did an excellent, excellent job as they did tonight on presenting it, um, very comprehensive, easy to understand and, um, prove the justification for this funding.
Great, thank you. I have one question only because I too attended that B and F meeting and the presentations were very informative. Um, Chief Conley, if we were to expand the amount of females on our police team, um, will we have the flexibility to increase lockers? And, um, is that something that we can take into consideration as we um, further do the specific layouts? Just want to make sure. I saw that you recently hired some extra women patrol people and just wanted to check.
Certainly, uh, uh, Madam President, it would be, uh, the the current layout for the female locker room is an extraordinary improvement on what they have. Uh, but it it is limited to, I believe, seven lockers. We have three female sworn police, police officers, uh, currently with their latest addition. And they would require us to double the size of sworn officers in order to, uh, females, which I'd love to see happen, but just, not just here in Gloucester, but, uh, nationwide. It's not trending that way. We we would be looking at, um, some time for that to happen. But if just say it did happen, um, and we would make other arrangements. It would probably require, you know, people, not everybody requires a lo- locker here at the Gloucester Police Department. Uh, several, uh, administrative staff have offices. Uh, some officers who are assigned to specialized assignments have offices in other facilities. We have a community impact unit space where I assume if we had more females, we'd have more females uh, distributed through specialized assignments, so they wouldn't necessarily all require a locker. So that that's, I'm I'm comfortable. I mean, obviously, I'd, if I could wave a magic wand, we'd add more square footage and we could have everything we ever wanted. But given the constraints and the cost, I think this is a great, uh, doable plan and design.
Thank you, Chief. So that concludes my questions. Um, does anyone have a follow-up question that they would like to ask? Raise your hand if you do. Um, seeing none, we're ready to close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed and I'd like to ask, um, Counsel Memmar if you would do the committee report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Uh, Budget and Finance, on a motion by myself, accepted by Counselor Gross, voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council approve the loan order as follows. Ordered that the city of Gloucester appropriates nineteen million, three hundred thousand dollars to pay costs associated with the renovation of the Gloucester Police Station and Courthouse facility, including costs incidental or related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approv- approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The mayor and any other appropriate official of the city are authorized to apply for, except and expend any grants or gifts that may be available to the city to pay costs of the projects. Any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized we borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. And further ordered that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Chapter forty-four A of the general laws, any or all of the bonds authorized by this order and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require for these purposes, and I so move.
Second.
Um, I heard Counsel Memmar made the motion. I think it was Counsel Gross that I heard, um, do the second. Um, is there a narrative before we begin the discussion, Counsel Memmar?
I think it's fair to say, as, uh, both other Budget and Finance Committee members have also, uh, said, we asked asked a broad range of in-depth questions, uh, at Budget and Finance, the subcommittee meeting. And the, uh, the the mayor and the team on behalf of this project uh, have put a lot of time and work into it over the years. Uh, this has been a long time coming. And, uh, I, we were all very satisfied that, uh, this project's time has now come. And it was our our pleasure to approve it based on the quality of the work that's been done and the presentation that was made to us.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, so our rules of debate, um, we have three minutes each to deliberate on this. So, um, we'll start with Counsel Grow, um, on the motion.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, Counsel President. Um, I just, I'm just really glad to see that the city is investing, um, in our buildings and infrastructure in our departments like this. Um, you know, we've had a a generational game of kicking the can down the 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 road there and avoiding the responsibilities of of maintaining, you know, our our facilities to the best of our ability. But the these are, you know, the city is a living, breathing entity and our buildings are used constantly. And, you know, we we tend to kind of want to ignore that, you know, we have to, we have to bring that things back to modernization. We have to bring them up to code. We have to bring them to, uh, tolerable workplaces that that people enjoy coming to and that the public, uh, deserves to 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 do their business in. So I'm very much in favor of this moving forward. Uh, you know, I I know we're going to have a lot of projects coming up in the future, but you know, that's that's the price of doing business, unfortunately. Um, you know, we we have to spend the money if we're going to have the services and the facilities that we uh, need and deserve and that that our employees need and deserve. So I fully support this. I'm I'm I I'm glad to see us doing it. I I hope that we continue this trend of of bringing ourselves into, uh, if not the full twenty-first century, at least the late twentieth, and that I'll be happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel Majota.
Um, very well said, Counsel Grow. I'm I'm very glad to support this tonight. I'm very happy to see the improvements, um, you know, the police officers, the community, um, we deserve this in this town. Um, like Counsel Harris says, Gloucester is the place where people want to be. Gloucester has noticed that we need to improve our infrastructure and, um, and just make these improvements. So support this and that's it.
Thank you, Counsel, uh, Counsel Memmar on the motion. You are muted, Counsel.
Thank you. I say I have nothing further to add at this time. I'm I'm glad we're having this vote and, uh, it's my sincere hope that this project moves right ahead.
Thank you. Um, Counsel Nolan.
Um, I will be supporting this. I've looked at it from all types of, um, angles. Um, speaking with people that work in the building, both on the court side and with the police department. It does need to happen. My main concern was to keep the court local and to keep the police station where people can walk in. Um, it's centrally located. It's a place that people can go and with court and probation and everything that's going on, emergency restraining orders, it it's it's vital for us to keep this going. Um, and I can't think of a better location than being centrally located downtown. So I I support this a hundred percent and thank you for everybody involved.
Thank you, Counsel O'Hara on the motion.
Thank you. Um, as Counsel Grow mentioned, unfortunately, we as a city over the years and decades have kicked the can down the road. We're paying the price for it now. Um, times have changed. We all know that. It's extremely unfortunate. Um, in policing, um, what's happened in our country and our men and women, uh, who protect us twenty-four seven need to have a facility which is state-of-the-art. They need, uh, facilities to train for obvious reasons that we don't, it sadly, we don't need to get into in in this debate. Um, we we will be, as Counsel Grow said, kicking the can. Our fire department is central, is 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 way overdue. We, um, the the need to have emergency services is very evident today, this day with two major fires happening as we speak, one in Lowell and one in New Bedford, um, where fire crews are battling huge fires. And so the need and for a city such as Gloucester with, we we have large buildings that are old. And although, uh, they're inspected on a regular basis, fires can happen and we need to be prepared for those things. So we as a city and we as a council, we have to sometimes do things that are necessarily popular to the pocketbook, but for the preservation of our city and the safety of our city, um, need to happen. And, um, for that reason, I will, I will be supporting this tonight. Um, I thank everyone for for putting the time into, um, bringing this forward and and doing the research and negotiating with the state to have them participate to reduce our our, uh, cost into the job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next up is Counsel O'Neil.
Yes, thank you. I will also be supporting this. I think it's very important that our police station is a safe place. I had no idea that, um, tiles were falling from the ceiling and that the, um, the locker rooms are in such disrepair. So thank you, Chief Conley, for, uh, opening my eyes to that and, um, that's about it. Thank you, uh, Bruce Taft for, uh, helping us get some money from the state. It's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Neil. Um, next up is, um, Counsel Worthley on the motion.
Thank you. So, um, I think we all take spending taxpayers' money very seriously. And nineteen point three million isn't a small amount of money, but it's also a very important investment. Um, our police department employees and our courthouse employees have been working in what I would consider to be somewhat unsafe working conditions and certainly not modern conditions. Um, our community policing model makes it so that people can walk into the police department. And if we were to move the building somewhere else, it'd be harder for people to report a a crime or obtain the services, as has been mentioned. And I think the access to justice is critically important. We wouldn't want to lose the court to another community and then have residents who don't have transportation not be able to get there. I want to make a a very strong point to give loads of credit to the administration, Mayor Verga, um, Jill Cahill for her, she took some time to help me get up to speed on this. The whole building committee, um, Senator Tar's office and Representative, Senator Tar and Representative Ferrante. We had a one-dollar lease and then a ten-thousand-dollar per year lease. And to get to a thirty-year lease with five and a half million dollars is remarkable. Um, and that likely would continue beyond the timeframe of paying for this loan and beyond the long, the, um, thirty-year lease, there'll be another negotiation at some point. And I I want to give all the credit in the world, especially Mayor Verga, for pulling it together. So, um, I look forward to seeing this done. I look forward to voting for this and, um, it should have been done many, many years ago. I'm glad to be part of the council that's doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Gross.
Yeah, um, you know, if the amount of work we're getting done here, um, and not having to build a new building is is pretty good for the city, um, as we've all heard about the working conditions and also, uh, the, um, Brad Door explained about the, uh, the new locker rooms, um, at B and F for the women that was now and where now their locker room is basically a closet with a bathroom across the hall. Um, so we really need to recognize that this, besides all the not structural, because they spend a term in the building is structurally sound, but the, the the parts that wear out, you know, the windows, the the roof is relatively new, but the the windows and everything else, after fifty years, even a well-maintained building is going to be starting showing wear and tear. But this one in particular needs, uh, needs some help. And I think that this is, uh, money well spent. Um, so and also having, uh, the location that it's in um, is kind of key and also having having the courts here for the next thirty years is, uh, kind of, um, huge. You know, because not too long ago, we almost lost it. So it, uh, these are all very positive things for this that come along with the this price tag. So that's it.
Thank you, Counselor, and I'm the last to speak. And I just wanted to, um, piggyback on what everyone has said. This has been a huge initiative by so many people, building committee, uh, members of the courthouse, our state legislators, Senator Tar and Margaret Ferrante, thank you so much, mayor's office, um, and and then the, um, the architect, the the Brad Door and and his team, um, just just really impressive. So, um, and the police chief. So thank you. Um, so I will be supporting this and I think at this point, we're ready for a roll call vote unless anyone has anything else that they would like to say. Seeing none, um, roll call vote. Uh, Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memmar.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Absolutely, yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Counsel Memmar.
Uh, Counsel President, I wish to make a motion to reconsider. Second.
Um, motion made by Counsel Memmar to reconsider. I believe it was seconded by Counsel Grow. Am I correct? Okay. Um, everyone's clear on what this motion to reconsider is? Um, roll call vote, Counsel Grow.
No.
Counsel Majota.
No.
Counsel Memmar.
Uh, why not? No, I vote no.
Hmm, Counsel Nolan.
No.
Counsel O'Hara.
No.
Counsel O'Neil.
No.
Counsel Worthley.
No.
Counsel Gilman, no. Counsel Gross.
No.
The motion fails. Zero in favor, nine opposed. Thank you all. Um, thank you so much. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The next order of business is public hearing twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine to amend Gloucester Code of One as Chapter ten Waterways, Section one point fifteen penalty for violating certain specified sections of the code and section. Section. Section eleven dash five fixed vending site specific location six by adding a new subsection D in the Dunfisk and Fee increased proposal with the corrections to Section ten dash fifty-two H as noted in Section ten fifty-four F to read fifty feet or less in length.
I would like to open the public hearing and I'd like to ask Member of Administration. Um, who would like to, um, begin? Is it our Harvard master, T J Shimotaro? Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Um, try to keep this brief. Myself and the Waterways Board, uh, over the last probably six months now, have taken a deep dive into, um, public landing reports, uh, different areas, things that need to be. public landing reports, different areas, things that need to be improved on or fixed, as well as a deep dive into our entire Chapter Ten Waterways ordinance fees. As you guys all know, excuse me, I lose my voice a little bit. The Waterways Enterprise Fund is 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 in that prize fund. It is supposed to be as sustainable as possible. So with that, you know, with that being said, we 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 took each individual line item and and compared that relative to not only other municipalities that are comparable to ours, but a lot of private private entities such as marinas and other you know, maritime professional areas where fees are used, such as launches of boat ramps in in conjunction. So it's been a lot of work. I applaud a lot of people for this. It's never easy to to try to, you know. It's never easy to raise fees for certain things, but in all reality, inflation has hit us pretty hard, especially in the marine world. We also you know, we are we also are are kind of subject to our own success, if you will, personnel wise, using extra personnel and to conduct, you know, routine patrols, having dock masters, having additional launch operators on to support all of our maritime operations. We're coming into Gloucesters, excuse me, we're coming into Gloucesters four hundredth anniversary this summer. It's going to be incredibly busy. So we looked at some of our policies and procedures and fees relative to public landings. So we're just all around trying to support and maintain what we have and continue to build upon. So that's that's kind of how we got here. We also have a new policy for fixed vendor spot for a water taxi business Gloucester to be able to bid on and use one of our facilities, which is all which is, you know, a very equitable service for the for the for the city and the watershed, people to be able to come and visit, tour. So there's a lot of lot of stuff going on here. A lot of work's gone into this. And that's that's pretty much that in a nutshell. I know that there's some members of the Waterways Board that would like to speak tonight. Again, I apologize. I think I'm coming down with a little bit of a cold here, so if I lose my voice, I apologize for that. But let my counterparts take it from here. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else from administration like to speak in favor of this? Seeing seeing none. So let's see a show of hands of attendees that would like to to speak and support. Arthur Sawyer. Would you introduce yourself and your address and you have up to three minutes to talk to our counsel? Can you unmute yourself, please? Arthur, your hand is raised. Oh, great. Okay. Name and address.
Sorry. Yeah, my name's Arthur Sawyer. I live at three sixty-eight Conker Street, Gloucester. I'm also a tenant at the IC four two dockage. I'll start off by saying I was I was a member, founding member of the Waterways Board. And I sat on the board for like seventeen years and never years I was on the board, we didn't notify people that were going to be rates were going to be increased for anything. So kind of at a disadvantage here tonight, just found out about this meeting about ten minutes past six and figured out how to get on. But I'm not going to argue about the cost of what the rent is at the, you know, commercial fishermen's docks in towns. To increase the rent over one hundred percent on no notice to the tenants is kind of a hard pill to swallow. And they're basing it basically on the State Fish Pier in Gloucester, which is, I would say, like a Cadillac facility. The facility at IC four two is the hoist is not in place, but I guess there's some sort of under budget. There's going to be a new hoist put in. The electricity is questionable. The lighting down there is probably ninety percent of the lighting down there is out. And the place is actually starting to come apart. There's been no serious maintenance done there since the beginning of, I think it's been existence since the late eighties. And the last couple of winters have been really tough on the facility. And it's needs some serious work done down there. And I don't see anybody proposing to do any of that. So and so I called around the state in the last week or so since I found out about this. And State Fish Pier is, I believe, the highest rate in the state. There's not a whole lot of public commercial fishermen's dockages in the state, but Beverly has one and they charge six sixty a foot. Fairhaven, New Bedford is like four dollars a foot. You know, Gloucester, we're at four dollars. Like I said, I'm not going to argue about whether the rent should go up or not, but it just, again, the hundred percent, over a hundred percent increase is just a tough pill for the fishermen to swallow. And I question who represents the fishing industry on the Waterways Board? As far as anything else goes, that's all I got. Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you, Arthur. Anyone else like to speak in favor of? Steve Flank. Bob Els and then Steve Flank. Welcome, Bob. Name and address. And you have three minutes to talk to us. Thank you.
Hey, Val. Bob Als, fifty-five Birken Street, Gloucester, a member of the Waterways Board. In in terms of the dockage fees, we also should think of the private enterprises in town. And we shouldn't be competing with private enterprises. For instance, we charge four dollars a foot and the railways charge is twelve dollars a foot. But again, we shouldn't be competing with these folks. And there's other marinas in town as well. In terms of the launch fee, mooring fee, and I think the boat ramp fees, I know that the Waterways Board did 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 our homework. We compared our fees to other waterfronts. And our goal across the across the board was, you know, not to overcharge. I know that this harbor master and this assistant harbor master are praiseworthy for turning this harbor around. It it has become a welcoming seaport for both residents and non-residents. And I just I just feel that, you know, one of the other things that 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 I guess no one's complaining about, which is great, but the fees that we charge for our moorings, for our launches, for our boat ramps and as well as and commercial dockage to be candid, is draconian, and we can't fix anything charging draconian prices. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Steve Blank, name and address.
Real councils, can you hear me?
Yes.
Steve Flank, nine Carlisle Street. So, you know, we heard we heard the first speaker talk about the disrepair, the dock is failing, the lights are out. We need some serious work. For dozens of years, the fee has remained stagnant. At our last public hearing, we heard one of the counselors, I forgot who said it, maybe it was Counsel Memmar talked about maintenance going forward. With the rate increase, this is going to provide a maintenance going forward. This will help bring things up to code, fix the dockage, get the lights working. Like I said, this it hasn't been, I don't know the exact number, but it's got to be over twenty years where there hasn't been a rate increase. So I know it's a big jump. The price of everything's kind of gone up. But I think that this is reasonable to to provide the service that we have. And I just want to echo what Bob just said a minute ago. You know, we praise TJ and Chad for doing the outstanding job that they do. This has been vetted through the Waterways, through the subcommittees. I'm sure TJ and Chad has taken a very long look at everything else surrounding it. And that's where we did come up with this number. So I'm going to support this this evening. Thank you, councils.
Thank you, Steve. Next up is Phil Cusmano. Phil, would you introduce yourself and your address? You have three minutes to speak to us.
Hi, my name is Phil Cusmano. I've been on the Waterways Board for a very, very long time. And I I also want to speak in favor of this. And like he's like the other two have said, this increase in 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 the fees is not just for I four C two, but and and that's part of it. But it it's for some of the other fees too. And the money would be used for for maintenance and for for up upgrading and updating a lot of what's been going on around town. And to get us more in touch with the fees that are going on in the communities that are around us. We don't charge anywhere near what the other communities around us have been charging. Maybe that's, you know, have been good for us, but we also have been falling behind on our maintenance because of that, too. Haven't had the money. So I I'm very much in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Are there any communications, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Counselors, it's our opportunity to ask questions. The public hearing is still open. Counsel Gro, your first. Why don't we, can we make this two minutes for for this matter?
I'm going to ask a really, really stupid question, and I would appreciate it. Dockage is is billed per foot per month, correct? So so forty foot boat would be three hundred and twenty bucks a month.
Correct. So commercial dockage is a little different than most recreational dockage. We charge for the maximum length of the slip. So if you had a twenty-five foot boat and you earn a thirty-five foot slip, you'd pay for the thirty-five feet. The average bill at I four C two is around a hundred and forty dollars a month for dockage.
Okay, that's fine. The only the only one that that kind of struck me, I'm not a kayaker or paddleboarder, but I did did notice that the four hundred dollar, is that a seasonal rate for the for the kayak and paddleboard dockage? Because relatively speaking, that's actually a lot more expensive, it seems to me, for the period of time that those boats are there than commercial dockages.
So.
Can we just hold on a sec? Counsel Nolan wants to, he's got his hand raised. So Counsel Nolan, the floor is yours.
Sorry, TJ. I just I thought it was clear in the minutes that that we corrected the information that the kayak racks are not part of the rays. They're going to remain at the same as what they are. Counsel Gilman caught that at a council level for a committee, and that wasn't the intention of the Harbor Mass's office. So that's been stricken from it. I believe it should have been stricken with language that the kayak racks were not included in this and they were.
By the minutes and that was still there. So that that, thank you. That's fine.
It has pertains to only the in-water storage for small boats and dinghies.
Very good. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Majota, any questions?
No questions for me.
Counsel Memmar.
I've been contacted just just this afternoon by a couple of commercial fishermen who are concerned that they had not gotten fair notice of this or that they thought it was an excessive jump. I think under the circumstances, what TJ and his crew are doing with the Waterways Board probably makes sense. And it's any price increase on any business entity is always challenging, but this is probably overdue. I'm not sure if there was a deficiency in the process of the outreach and communicating to the folks that this is going to impact. But I I will be supporting going ahead as recommended.
Any questions now, Counsel Nolan?
I know. I think that everything that we brought up at committee is strong forward and straightforward.
Thank you, Counselor. Next is Counsel O'Hara.
Thank you. I I think this question would be directed to TJ. As far as Mr. Sawyer's comments of conditions that I foresee to dockage, is is that something that would be addressed or do you do you have that on your radar screen? Assuming that what he stated is true, would would that be, those items be addressed in the future?
Yeah, I'll give you the the long and the short of it is, yes. You know, we take in about twenty thousand dollars and some change in rent there. We're we're going to, we have to replace the hoist that Mr. Sawyer spoke of earlier and do some electrical repairs in that area. The electrical and between the between the hoist repair and the commercial marina liability policy, we're in the whole five grand for the year there. It's about a twenty thousand dollar repair just for the hoist alone. Almost eats up the entire rent for the whole year. I do not disagree with Mr. Sawyer in his assessment that the facility needs a lot of work. It's very old. It gets pretty beat up in the winter time. It's a much larger conversation than a couple of, you know, we're we're putting Band-Aids on it. This is a step in the right direction to start to save some money and make some of these repairs. The electrical is very complicated there. The transformer is actually in the Gloucester House parking lot, provides power to kiosks and other things in that area, lights as well as the marina. I'm working with the administration now on a redesign or refit of St. Peter's. That's was up first because it needs the most attention. Briefly discussing with the administration, you know, the intention to be to look after that at I four C two as a whole. I know that there's larger plans for that whole parking lot. And some of the stuff that we would do now, could, you know, we don't want to do anything to now that will could be ripped out in the near future. So we also want to build a little bank account to try to, you know, keep this facility operating until the larger picture is 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 completed here. But, um, yes, the this is to help in that and and fix and repair and maintain. Just for the record, these fees have not been raised since inception. Since the city took this over, it's been was with a private entity, then ComDev, then us. The city's been involved in this. The fees have remained the same since inception. The, you know, I know it is double. The Waterways Board Board looked at that very seriously, you know, no one wants to see anything go up double. But again, they haven't been addressed and or or revamped in over twenty years. Nothing is the same price as it was twenty years ago. Most tripled or quadrupled. I do I do understand where, you know, where they're coming from, but I think the water did a good job vetting all of that. So thanks.
Thank you. Continue, Counsel O'Hara for questions.
Again, for TJ, where where does Gloucester fit? You 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 obviously done a lot of research. As far as, say, Beverly, which I know has a lot of dockage for commercial, specifically lobstermen. Where where do we fit on pricing and in what services and condition of their facilities for the buck versus Gloucester?
Sure. So the State Fish Pier, I actually have the analysis in front of me. They have a little bit more of a complicated model for price per foot and width and so on and so forth, water and stuff like that. They average about, from what I, about nine dollars and fifty cents a foot. So a dollar fifty more. It is a nicer facility. And some of their rates are up to twelve dollars a foot. As far as other commercial entities in town, the railways and Rose's Marine, they're between ten fifty and thirteen dollars a foot. Other municipalities, believe it or not, there's not a lot of other municipalities, Situate, a couple of places on the South Shore that actually own and run commercial marinas. Some, there's a lot of commercial boats tied in, like Situate has a giant municipal marina. There's commercial boats tied in with that for a cheaper rate. But as as far as is our research, we're we're well below market value here. Four dollars a foot at a hundred and forty dollars a month simply is just not sustainable to to keep going down that, you know, for to be able to replace in in the future, even whether it was a loan order, the debt service would have to be paid. This is a step towards that. But we're we're still below market value, I believe. Eight dollars a foot. You're looking at under three thousand dollars a year to keep your boat there. There's parking provided there. You're looking at under three thousand dollars a year to keep your boat there, um there's parking provided there, there's also trap storage. Uh other facilities. Um I know the state fish pier isn't this year, but they intend to charge for trap storage. Uh there's thousands of traps down at I foresee two right now. A hundred and eighty sixty feet of dedicated parking, um. I still think it's a really good bang for your buck, uh. If if you had to go out in town, you'd be paying a significantly higher price. Uh we do have a waitlist there, people are itching to get into that, into that facility, uh you know. Because it is much cheaper than other entities.
Any further questions, Council O'Hara?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, um next up for questions is Council Worthley.
When Counselor Neil?
I'm sorry, I went out of order. Um let's um continue with Council O'Neill, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you, that's okay, sorry, um. So um the first caller, Mister Sawyer said that Beverly was six sixty a foot, which I don't know, I don't have a boat. I'm not a commercial fisherman, I don't, you know, and um. I think TJ, did you say Beverly's like nine fifty to twelve dollars a foot?
Uh that's mixed in with private entities that house commercial boats down there.
And um. Did you say that it's part of this money is going to go to fix the hoist or replace the hoist this year or next year or? And fix the electric, are you gonna wait in? I wasn't quite clear on that.
Or no, I know that the hoist is a detrimental piece of equipment, those guys over there. Most of the gear is on order right now because of the 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 right whale closure that the state has, I'm doing everything. Get that hoist uh before lobstering starts for the spring, it's been very challenging, um we've. The the, we're still having supply chain issues and this kind of in the maritime field. Um the hoist to replace the one that's there now. Uh without getting too complicated on track speed and trolley speed and top and feet per second. So on and so forth, is six to eight months new to the tune of about fourteen thousand dollars. Um I didn't want to wait that long, I could go with an inferior one that's made in a foreign country that probably won't last. May have to end up being an option, but right now we've we've taken it down and brought it to a distributor up the Newbury Port that hopefully can rebuild it. Or repair it in the meantime, and then we could order a new one, but it's being done as fast as possible, so I can get this. Uh in for these guys for the springs, I know how important it is, especially. With all the lobster gear that had to be taken out of the water with the right whale closure, so that is being done now and we used. We use money, uh monies out of the Waterways uh Enterprise Fund Stabilization Account to do that.
Okay, thank you, so uh has the hoist been brought to Newbury Port?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, and is there a hoist at um Saint Peters as well? That needs repair or no?
So there used to be a hoist long, long, long ago, um there is no hoist currently, uh that is with, is part of the scope. Um of the redesign. Slash refit of Saint Peter, so we hope that, you know, after we get through the design phase and we can. Maybe leverage some seaport economic money to fix that area down there, it's it's also part of the harbor walk, it's land and seaward side. The intention would be to put a hoist back there as well.
Okay, and the stabilization fund that can be used for the hoists? And is there, what kind of money is in that fund?
So every year at the end of the year, if the Waterways uh Enterprise Fund has retained earnings, I come before budget finance. Over the last, and you know, we use it for various things that pop up throughout um. Throughout the year, um that were unanticipated, contingency emergency stuff, storm repair damage or capital improvements. I also try to usually air mark between thirty and forty percent of that over the last three years to into a savings account. Which goes into a overall stabilization uh fund, again, you know, our budget's around five hundred fifty thousand for the year. So if we're not talking about a a giant pool of money here for a lot of festivities. That's kind of how that works.
Okay, so that's what's in the fund is five hundred fifty thousand?
No, no, that's that's our overall operational budget, I believe there's about a hundred twenty thousand dollars or. On that in our stabilization account currently.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor, now we have Council Worthley.
Thank you, just a couple of questions, um. So TJ, you said that we haven't raised the fee in twenty years, or you said since inception, I wasn't sure if it was a um specific twenty years.
Went back and did a lot of research on this, I tried to. This has been a lo- a long discussion here, uh as far as we could tell, the fee hasn't been raised since inception. Since the city up taking actual ownership of of it, of the marina.
And you suspect that was twenty years ago? Cause I feel like it would have been longer than that.
It might then, um I I I think. It was a Gloucester Development Authority and then it went to something else, and then it went to the community development, and then it went under the Harbor Master and the Waterways. So it's changed hands a variety of times, but it it could be longer than that.
I mean, the GRA was in in place forty years ago, so Gloucester Development Authority, so it could have been longer, I just want to speak to um or ask the question. That Mister Sawyer raised, and and yes, a hundred percent increase is a lot, it feels like a lot, but when you divide it over twenty years or maybe longer. It does, not including compounding interest, it's five percent raise per year, doesn't make it easier to pay next year, but. The context is the services that need to be provided do cost more and. Maybe there should have been some increases as we went along and and not that there's good news, but. We didn't charge more over the last twenty years, or again, I think it's forty years, so that would make it even less than five percent, so. Um then the question is, a separate question, do you have a sort of schedule of repairs? Obviously, you make repairs and I think you prepared a dock yourself and then and your staff did and you got the. The boat up and running, but do you have a schedule of repairs that we know of and Captain Prudence Advisory Board, like how does that work?
So again, Mister Sawyer is not incorrect in saying that facility is in. Close to poor condition, I mean, the it's just very old and it's right on the water, but. Um we we pretty much conduct repairs on a as needed basis, we're not making any capital improvements down there, you would have, you wouldn't. It's 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 a couple entities, right, so you have the docks and the pilings, then you have the landward structure, which is part of the harbor walk. And where the hoist is, and then there's a seawall bulkhead there, all of that stuff is messy. Um and once you start peeling back the onion, it gets more rotten when you get towards the middle of it. Uh like he said, this, you know, the, it was in hard shape in the eighties and here we are at twenty twenty three, so. Uh we are at a. A as needed basis down there, but um realistically, the whole area include, you know, has, there's a bigger. There's a bigger picture going on there, whatever happens will encompass the seawall in the harbor walk and so on and so forth, but. In order to, you know, our marina liability policy is almost ten thousand a year, um that's all, that's almost, you know. A third of all the rents for I foresee two and it's like, you know, twenty eight percent of the rents is just the insurance on the place. Um so uh moving forward, I, you know, I know what will come before you you all again at some point. For a loan authorization or seaport bond money to try to improve this facility, but we're gonna have to pay something. Um and that's something is, needs to start now and uh, you know, it. But it is, you know.
Didn't we vote on something in the last six or seven months uh to repair the hoist or accept some funding for that, I I'm trying to remember back. What it was, but uh is it a hundred thousand dollars or? Does that ring about to you?
No, not for this, I actually um.
And in Saint Peters hoist.
And it's been before the Waterways Board voted on to use, I don't even. Uh I've got so many things going on with the changes lately, I don't even know if I've come before BNF for it yet, um. I'm, we're still trying to source one of these hoists in a reasonable amount of time and. Out of my just operating budget, I'm paying for hopefully repairs to be done with this, I haven't heard anything in the in the last week or so, but. That that's kind of where we're at with it, I I fully intend to do everything I can to have, make sure that there is some kind of voice there for these guys come. Uh May fifteenth, so.
Thank you, I don't have any further questions at this point, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, uh Council Gross, any questions?
Where to start? Unfortunately, um well, one. TJ, when you said the insurance, that's for all the waterfront, right, not just these two marinas.
Yeah, Marina liability and our and our and our three public landings, so. That's that's all, that's all encompassed.
Well, not just the, right, the. Three public boat ramps and the public landings, which includes um Ripley Cove.
Yeah, Cripple Cove, Solomon Jacobs and Saint Peters, which I consider. All in one down there in I foresee two.
All right, we don't have any on the state launch ramps, so, okay, all right. Um there's. A lot in this, you know, you put forward an awful lot of things. And I'm seeing the the legal notices pretty light. Um there's an awful lot of numbers that were not mentioned in here that we're going to be voting on tonight. And um you know, the marinas got a whole new section. Um they were ten fifty four, now they're ten fifty five, um that was not mentioned, um. The Solomon Jacobs um number was not in, and there's just, there's just an awful lot in there, and I do not know how we. How we can vote on this without having the public notice reflecting. All these sections that we're voting on, um so I don't know, Joanne. Um if there's any answer to this, cause it.
Okay, so if you look at the public hearing, there should be a link. On that public hearing that brings you to all the amendments. I'll have to look at the packet.
Well, I mean, I can look at the public hearing.
I have, I have the cap, I have the public hearing on my desktop. With all the amendments and everything that I can share, usually when it's so lengthy like that, what we do, we do.
Yeah, there's, there is a link here.
Yeah, and you would have to do that.
But what?
Hey, hold on a sec, Counselor, but.
And that would bring you to all the proposed amendments.
Well, then, alls we have to do then in any public notice is just publish that link. Um if that's, you know, I mean, we we mentioned in here that we're gonna correct. One to read fifty feet or less, but we don't mention in here ten fifty five, that we're gonna raise the rates on the commercial marinas. I mean, uh you know, at least have the number in there, um. I just, that that kind of. I'm I'm having a little trouble, um. You know, I understand that we're trying to condense what it is, and there is an awful lot in here, but. I don't even know if the counselors are aware of everything that's in here that has to be voted on. Um and how are we gonna vote on them, are we gonna take them as all individ, you know, we in in our motions, we don't have these things as individuals. Um we don't even have half of them mentioned in our motions. So I don't know how we're gonna, how we're gonna vote on these things. Ten fifty five is not even in the motions. To create a new section.
Come, I'd like to refer to Council Nolan because he was um, he was uh chairing the meeting, do you? Do you have anything to um to add to, it's, I guess it's kind of a question. Are we prepared?
Well, see, I I mean, I'm just trying to do this properly, I'm not trying to lay blame or point fingers or any, anything, I'm just trying to do this. Cause there's a lot here and. That may be what the issue was, is there was so much here and there was just little tidbits. All throughout that um that really, you know, creates a certain amount of um. Confusion because there is so many different little things throughout it.
Um Council Nolan, do you have anything to um to add? Cause this went through.
I do, at O N A, we did go through all these motions and Tony actually sat in on these meetings, uh with Council Worthley. Um we did talk about uh the dockage fees, the raisin of stuff, Tony did make a question about, he didn't feel comfortable. With the raising the rates for the commercial um boats, um but everything was asked. And um. Any questions that was was, anybody who's looking to have a question to be, to be answered was able to do that at committee level. Uh we do have our agenda in front of us in our motions, um they may not list out every single thing. Um and be general, but that's pretty much how every single motion. On everything that happens in the city, we we have a a synopsis of it, uh including lengthy. Uh budget and finance and and planning and development meetings, um. But I think that the bottom line, the commitment for us to put something on the paper as an advertisement for a hearing. Is what the clerk's office does go through, um and there is ways of finding out what it is. And it is people's responsibility, um Arthur Sawyer did say he didn't know about this until ten minutes before. Six, but he also said for the last week, he went around looking to find out other prices in other areas, knowing this was coming. And nothing against Arthur, he's a great guy, but um the public does know what's going on. Uh we can inform them as much as possible, um but it's with money and everything else, it's tough, social media. Doesn't actually get it out there, the city's website is our uh hardscape for this to take care of it, but. Uh Tony does raise a question, it's not in the amendment, um but that's been kind of best practice, I I guess. Um for the committee report, um so Madam President, it would be your call on how you want to proceed with this. But it was certainly vetted at O N A and Tony was there for that.
Um Jill Cahill has her hand raised, so in um. In respect to that, um okay, so I I. I just want to mention that when some proposed amendments. That are put through and like we did on the traffic commission amendments, okay, that were put through um previously. They vote on the amendments as in the memo. That from the Harbor Master, okay, uh memo from the General Counsel, okay, so those are the proposed amendments, so you have voted on it before. And not listed all the sections, okay, you listed the chapter like you did in the traffic. They did that whole overhaul and you you voted on the proposed amendments. And you know, as presented um in the memory, I mean, Daniel February, like hard TJ, February twenty first, twenty twenty three. So there was a memorandum and a packet in the mayor's office and that went through that way, so you have voted before. And not listed every single section of the um like chapter twenty two, for example, like you did before. Um I'd like to um call upon Jill Cahill.
Is my time up?
Go ahead, Jill. Well, what did you just say?
I asked if my time was up.
Oh, okay, well, we kind of got off the track of questions, Counselor, so.
But I I did mention at the end of the meeting that this was kind of confusing um the motion, but I said. Moving it forward to City Council, uh.
Let's continue your two minutes, so where are we, um Counselor?
That's all, you can hear from uh. From CAOK.
Okay, um Jill, your hand is raised, thank you.
Thank you, can you hear me, cause I have, I'm going through my phone, but with the computer, yes.
Loud and clear, yeah, we can see you too.
Yeah, I just want to offer, I have, I just uh reached out um to our General Counsel Suzanne Egan, if if there's question and and there's the will of the council. To have her look into this, I'm sure it would take a quick recess to do so, but if there's any questions, she is available. If that's the the way you want to proceed, I just want to make sure you knew she was, she was around.
Okay, so um Counselors, why don't we take a five minute or ten minute break? And um what I'd like to do is ask. A Madam Clerk to get the um the advertisement that was in the newspaper, so we can take a look at that. And make sure that um that what we advertise is consistent and and um.
In our packet.
It is. Yeah.
Everybody has.
I was just, I was asking her to to put it on her desktop so we can see it.
I I have it, I have it on my desktop, so I can. Screen share, but if you want to take a five minute recess, that's fine.
All right, so let's.
I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to make trouble here, I just, it it just. It struck me as odd to have all these, you know, changes that didn't have, um. You know, that they weren't noticed, I know in the, in the zoning ordinances, you have every single number. You know, you don't have to say what it is, but you say what what number and and section it is. And every single thing.
We have done both ways, Tony, we've done it both ways.
So let's, let's um, let's take a ten minute break and um let's um, let's ask.
Ten or five?
I I think ten, ten is a. I, I think ten, ten is appropriate.
You could call um, Suzanne, she's, I think she's waiting for your call, and then she'll join the meeting.
Okay, alright, so we will do that.
She's connecting now.
So. Eight, eight twenty-five. Um, roll call vote, um, Grow, Council. Council Grow, you have your hand raised. You are muted.
Why are we taking a break?
Because we want to consult with our attorney right now on, on.
Alright.
Okay.
I guess so. Okay. I'll be getting coffee.
Okay, so we will be back in ten minutes at um, eight twenty-five. Roll call vote, we have to do it, uh, Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neal.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman. Yes, Council Gross.
Yeah.
Let's take a ten-minute break. Um. Can, can we mute everybody right now? So um, we are resuming our meeting after a ten-minute recess.
Oh, you, can you see Scott and Tracy on?
Um, Scott and Tracy and um, Council Majota, um. And um, at this point, we are still in the questions part, so I would like to ask Suzanne Egan, our attorney. If she could explain to us what she thinks the um, the best. Way that we handle this issue right now in terms of what we can vote on tonight. And what we might need to resubmit um, as a public hearing notice. So um, Suzanne, you have the floor, and we're asking you to. Explain to us what you think the next step is that we should take based on Council Gross's.
Okay, thank you, um, Madam Chair. So I've reviewed the um, the advertisement that was. Uh, published in the Gloucester Daily Times, and what that advertisement does is it speaks to specific sections of the ordinance. Um, that are going to be reviewed by the City Council, and those, if we look at the specific sections are. Um, I believe, I don't have it right in front of me because I don't have two computers, but it's, if you, if we read it, or maybe we can screen share that. Uh, it's on page one seventy, one seventy-one of the City Council packet. And it speaks specifically to sections ten dash fifty-four. Um, uh, section ten, and then a couple of others, and it, and it relates to the Dunfudden. Park, to the fixed vending location. And to the um, increase in fees and penalties. And those, because they have been published in the paper and people are on notice of that, so that if they are interested in listening to this or lis- or interested in objecting to this proposal. Um, are able to attend, but because the advertisement is very specific. I would say that the uh, sections that are proposed to be amended that are not listed and not explained. Should be continued to another night, and that section should be re-advertised. That is the Solomon Jacobs. Landing uh, limitation for recreational boating, but um, and then. The um, but that, creating that fixed vendor location uh, was advertised. So that would be my recommendation for tonight.
Not work.
Point of order.
Um, Council Worthley, state your point.
Thank you. So uh, in regards to Counselor Gross's question, valid question, valid answer. But I don't know how, and, and I was prepared to move forward on what we could vote on tonight, but I don't know how we can have a public hearing. And have a recess and have some sort of dialogue off. Camera, off microphone. I take a sip of water, shut my camera off, and someone says, you gotta show your face. I don't know how we can have a public hearing. And I don't want to be a, a cog in the wheel of progress here, but how do we have a public hearing then go offline and come back with? Questions and answered, and, and I like the answer, but I don't think from, from a. Um, public policy standpoint, we should be, uh, we get criticized for potentially having. Things happen off camera, off film, th- this is. I think we need to do the whole thing over again.
So I don't, I don't, I don't agree with your point, um, because I believe that we. Have an opportunity to huddle and discuss what happened, and now we're back live. And we are remedying the situation publicly. I think it's always appropriate to pause if we feel that there's a question, so um, if someone would like to um. To challenge my um, my um, my ruling, please um, please appeal. My ruling, um.
Yes, point of order.
Yep, um.
Oh, wait a minute, Council Grow and Council Nolan have their hands.
Council Nolan and then Council Grow, um, have their hands raised. Council Nolan.
Um, I don't believe that we had the right to huddle. Um, I believe that you spoke with. Um, our city solicitor uh, during a break, and that wasn't privy to the full council. Um, and I believe with Council Worthley on this, that this is a weird situation. And if anything, if we're gonna do at all, I would say that we'd move. Both motions on chapter ten. To come back and be re-notified and come back in front of the council, because I think what we just saw was something that we really shouldn't have seen. Um, where something happened offline, and then we came back with a decision, decision. And it makes it seem strange, so um, I hate to be the one to tell you this, but I, I do challenge that. I, I think that that is weird conduct of how that happened.
Okay, so the motion, so is there a motion to appeal the ruling of the chair?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Um, roll call vote, um, Council Grow.
Justin comes first.
Well, Council Grow didn't speak yet, right?
Is this deliberate? Can we do, is this a debatable motion?
Um, the ruling of the chair is um, yes, you know, it is, and it's. So um, was there um? Is there a discussion on, on the um, the motion?
Well, I'll, I'll defer to the ma- maker of the motion, and then I'll speak.
Okay, I think I moved it. Um, so whether it's a big issue or s- or small issue. It shouldn't matter, right? The public's business always has to be done in public. And this shouldn't be, this is a smaller issue compared to other things sometimes, but. Even the perception of the public's business not being done in public is a problem. And so um, I know it's gonna cost a little money to advertise, and I know it's gonna take a little more time, but I think that. In, not just in spirit of transparency, but in the act of being transparent, we need to always do the public's business in public, so that's. Why we'll be voting yes on this.
Um, Council Grow.
Okay, uh, uh, my, my position on this is that uh, one, I, I probably agree with the idea of sending them both back to O N A for re- re-advertising. As pertains to the particular issue, though. Nobody else on this council besides Council President Gilman conferred with the attorney and the city clerk on a clarification of an issue before us. We didn't huddle. There was no huddling by anybody other than the council president referring to the city solicitor and to the city clerk. For an, a clarification about a procedural issue, and then we got that procedural issue explained to us. At, immediately after the return, return of the meeting. There was no decision being made by the council. There was no lack of transparency. This was. This was basically trying to figure out who screwed up and how, and how we were gonna fix it. I don't see a problem with that. I don't think that the, the city, uh, the public was in the least bit jeopardized in terms of transparency. We were trying to figure out what the best course of action was so that we could do the right thing by the public, so. I don't support the uh, the motion to uh, to overturn the chair. I think that uh, if we had. Gone offline and huddled together as a council, I'd absolutely have had a problem with that. But I don't think asking advice from the council, uh, the city's, city clerk and the, and the city solicitor qualifies as, as violating the public trust.
Any other uh, comments on this um, um, Council Memard?
I, I uh. I agree with Counselor Grow. Uh, there wasn't any huddling or out of public view discussion, other than a clarification, the way of technicality. Uh, the, the, Council President Gilman and Clerk Senos were seeking from our General Counsel. I did not confer with anybody. I had a brownie, so, you know.
Anyone else on the motion? Um. Council Worthley and then Council Majota.
Um, I was gonna say, I didn't huddle either. But telling people after the fact that we didn't huddle when we weren't online, eh, there's. Look, I, I don't think anybody did anything legally, technically wrong or immoral. I just feel like we've got an obligation to always do the public's business in public, so there's no reason why that, those questions couldn't have been just. Asked in public and answered in public, but how do we know? I don't think this happened, but how do we know that seven counselors didn't get on a phone and start talking to each other? Because we can't prove that, that gives us an obligation. Again, I, I take your word for it. I'm not suspecting that you did, but we have an obligation to say. We can also prove that we didn't, because we stayed on our cameras and stayed online, so I think that even the slightest perception of us um. Violating that is enough to say, let's just advertise these hearings again and, and pick up where you left off.
Um, Council Majota, you had your hand raised, and then Council O'Neal on the motion.
No, hmm. I think about, no comment.
Say it again, please?
No comment, nothing.
Okay, um, Council Neil.
Yes, hi, uh, thank you. I would agree with, I do agree with uh, Council Worthley, Council Gross. I think it should go back to. O N A. So we're back to the Waterways Board and have it cleaned up, so it's. More understandable and also to the, to, to the, the point that Council Worthley makes is. We could have called each other on the phone, and not that we did, cause we didn't, but um. It's the perception, I mean, and it's the ability, what's to stop us from actually doing that next time? Hey, let's, you know. Not that we would, but you know, people are suspicious.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, anyone else that hasn't spoken on the motion, um, Council O'Hara?
Yes, I agree with uh, Council Worthley that uh, we should bring this back. Um. There was thirteen minutes of dead airspace that. And we're, we're in a public meeting, we didn't recess for, to take a break, uh, to use the restrooms. Um, I, I, I think it's um, extremely important for us to conduct the business in total transparency and. Unfortunately, I, I think. I think uh, it was in question, so I, I agree, we should bring this back and re-advertise it. Thank you.
Um, Council Gross and then Council Grow.
Um, first off, I'd like to apologize for the confusion because I was at the subcommittee, and I should have been. More um, on the ball um, for this. There is no excuse, even though I was a, a substitute. That's what you get, Jamie, and Frank for. For uh, being uh, under the weather those nights, but. I, I do apologize that I should have. I, I, it, it seemed odd to me at the time too, and I think I did comment on it that that. That the motion seemed a little vague. Um, I had hoped that maybe the public hearing and we could square it away. Um, at City Council and not in this messy fashion that I brought up. Um, if we're going to not be able to, if not gonna recognize this as a recess. Then we are not going to be able, and we are going to consider that we can all. Get together and call each other during any, we can't have any recesses ever again. If we vote against this one. Yes, because this is, this is, there is what we are considering of what could be the issue. Could happen at any recess. We can call each other during any recess. At, and, you know, so let's, let's be realistic about that, you know, so. I think that we shouldn't have recessed. I didn't think we should have at the time. I probably should have spoken up, but I was, had already spoken enough at the time. I thought. That, the General Counsel was on air and could have given us probably her opinion right then. Um, and so that's probably how we should have handled this, but I think if we're gonna cancel out this recess, then we have to cancel out all recesses.
Um, Council Grow.
Just getting back to the point of order issue, you know, literally fifteen minutes ago, I raised my hand and asked why we were, we were going to take a recess. And then at a vote of nine to zero, we agreed to take a recess, knowing exactly what we were going to do the recess for. So I do not quite understand all this consternation after the fact. We knew exactly what was happening, we voted to allow it to happen, and now we're coming on. And, and, and worrying about whether or not we're looking transparency, and I just think it's a, it's, it's, it's a bit absurd, to be honest with you. We.
Point of order. Absurd, that's a nice adjective.
Yeah, it's, it's absurd, and, and excuse my freedom, freedom of speech, my friend. But we, we all had, we all had the opportunity to say no to the recess. We agreed to it, and now we're complaining about it. I don't really quite see what, the, the line, the dots don't connect.
Um, Council Worthley.
Let me help enlighten Counselor Grow. Um, Counselor Grow's made a perfect point. And we probably shouldn't have recessed. If we had decided to recess because someone needs to use the bathroom or whatever, we'd say we're recessing, we'd stop. When you say, and I probably should have voted no, right? And, and I can reconsider. Look, I can have new thoughts after a quick vote. I can, I'm allowed to think. We all are, and in that fifteen-minute break, I thought, this doesn't feel right. Because we left not to take a break, we left to literally conduct additional public business. Not we. One member, and I'm not upset, I don't, I, there's no consternation. I think we have to do the right thing, and we should always do the right thing. Right? And so if there's a different issue that comes up, and we say, well, we did it, it was okay on, on this issue. What's to say we're not gonna do something else that's a much more significant problem? In a recess, so I, I don't think this means we can't recess, we just can't do public business during recess, and, and state that on the record.
And, and I would just like to, to state something as well. Um, no one deliberated between counselors. We were talking about a technicality, and we came back into open session. And we were going to explain the technicality. I have seen plenty of public officials in the past. Even on the City Council here of Gloucester, that have taken a timeout to discuss something with the city clerk. Or I've seen it with Bruce Toby, I've seen it in past meetings, and this happens. And, and nobody was talking to another member of the City Council. And that's where the fishiness occurs, so I would like to at least represent myself in saying that. This was a difficult situation, and we also have some time intense issues on this matter, because. If we pause now on this, it is going to mess up all this stuff for the summer. And it's gonna take at least another two weeks. We can get another add-in on April eleventh. And we can deliberate, and then we're gonna have to, um, we're gonna have to um, wait for thirty days, thirty-one days, because it's an order. So the ordinance, so this is going to butt right into the middle of the summer. And so I was trying to come up with something that we could maybe approve of, of part of this. Um, and, and I was just asking Suzanne to explain it to us, so we might be able to move on with part of this. And this was where I asked the question, where the point of order was called. So at this point, um, there is fairly, there's an order on the floor right now, and it's to appe- appeal the ruling of the chair. And um, I think we, we have a, we need to do a roll call vote, and then we will just determine what the next step is. Um, Council Gross.
So. The appealing of the ruling of the chair does not affect. Whether or not we can vote on these motions that we've gotten business, we've, that we have gotten advice that. I trust from the attorney that says these things were duly advertised, those things you can vote on. So I think that those things we should be able to vote on, um, and I don't want to tie that to this vote. Um, to the challenge to the uh, ruling of the chair.
Okay. So the motion is to overrule the ruling of the chair. Um, Council Grow.
No.
Council Majota.
No.
Council Memard.
No.
Council Nolan.
Oh, no.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
I don't think I can vote. Correct? Can I vote on, um, um, Suzanne? I don't think I can vote on this. Um, Counsel Gross.
No.
Um, so, um, the noes have it five in favor, three opposed. So the, the ruling of the chair stands. And, um, now we're back to, um, the, um, the next step. Okay, so, um, so Suzanne, maybe can you, can we go back to talking about? The ad and what you believe that we need to do. Um, going forward to make sure that we are fairly. Advertising any matters that weren't accurately advertised. And what you feel we're able to continue, um. Discussing because the public hearing is still open. We're still in the question period, haven't hit the gavel. Um, so we can, um, get your thoughts on the next step.
Um, yes, so it's my, so I, I wasn't, I haven't been participating on this meeting throughout the entire thing, but, um. It's my understanding that the question has come up as to whether or not the advertisement is shown on page one seventy-one. That the city council packet, um, is sufficient to encompass the entire proposed amendments. To the, to chapter ten Waterways Administration. So I'm looking at that advertisement right now. And that says amend, uh, GCO, chapter ten Waterways Administration, sections one dash fifteen. Penalty for violating certain specified sections of the code. And section eleven dash five fixed vending site. Hmm, specific location six by adding a new subsection D. And done fudge in fee increased proposal with corrections to section ten dash fifty-two H as noted. And section ten dash fifty-four F. To read fifty-five feet or less in length. So this advertisement is very specific as to the sections and the language. Uh, or the references, the chapters. So I would say those specifically noted sections are duly advertised. And are, um, are, it's appropriate for the council to discuss and vote on those. The particular sections of the ordinance that are proposed to be amended that are not noted in this advertisement should be. Um, advertised for another public hearing and deliberated at that time.
And can we be clear on what those matters are?
Yeah, um, those are the sections of the ordinance which. So it, um, or particularly, so I think to clean, sort of to clean this up, right, the ad is, is maybe a little confusing because it does say ten. Dash fifty-four F and H, but in fact, what I believe we're looking, um, the proposal is to amend the entire section ten dash fifty-four. Um, so I would say advertise ten dash fifty-four. Um. It looks like ten dash eighty-eight. Ten dash fifty-five. And I believe those are the portions that are not specifically noted in the advertisement and I'm looking at the O and A minutes to determine that. But I think so, I think also that it is appropriate, um, to do outside of the public hearing is to review these. Because this is an administrative act that the city clerk can undertake and I can, um, assist her with this is to. Look at the proposed amendments that were before, um, that the Waterways Commission and the Harbor Master is proposing. To turn and look at the advertisement and make that determination as to which were properly ever, or which were noted in the advertisement and which were not. And then schedule that for a public hearing at the next city council meeting.
Um, I'm gonna, um, call upon, um, Counsel Gross. His hand has been patiently raised.
Um, Suzanne, ten dash fifty-four, which is what's advertised. Um, in our existing code does not have any sections, doesn't have anything in it. Um, it just says commercial marinas. Um, so what is advertised here is ten dash fifty-four, um. Uh, F. Is a new, so that's new. So that we can't vote on, correct? Because that's, that's in that section that you said we would have to vote as new.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So to make this clean, if the ten, if you're, if essentially what you're doing is you're looking at ten. Dash fifty-four and you're adding additional sections in your own, you're doing a revamp of it. Then I would say the best, the, the cleanest way to handle this to provide the most notice would be to not, um, take that matter up tonight. But to re-advertise for section ten dash fifty-four and take that entire section up at a, um, another public hearing.
Um, Counsel Gross, go ahead.
So the only thing I can see that we're talking about then is ten dash, um, fifty-two H. For tonight.
Well, it, so that, when I'm looking at the advertisement, it has section one dash fifteen, eleven dash five. And, yeah, and eleven dash five. So one, one dash fifteen and eleven dash five.
I'm not seeing anything in, um, one dash fifteen, but eleven dash five, which creates that would be, um, yes, we can, that would be something we could vote on.
And the one fifteen, I think is a, um, increasing the penalties for the, uh, for violations.
What is Tony looking at, you know?
Tony, can you, um, share with us what you're looking at right now?
I'm looking at the packet. And I mean, I pulled up what one dash fifteen is. Chapter ten. And its penalty is one hundred dollar per violation. Each day a violation shall constitute a sep- separate offense. Enforcing persons, harbor master, assistant harbor masters and police officers.
So Tony, in that packet, after all the amendments, there should be the section one dash fifteen also. After you go through all that chapter ten amendments. Because TJ.
There is.
Yeah.
On page one ninety-four of the packet.
Perfect, yep.
Okay.
So that one we can vote on too.
Yes, because there were so many amendments and memos with the packet. So that whole, whole thing is all together.
Um. Counsel O'Neill, you have your hand raised.
Yes, um, I'm looking at all this and. Where is the, where does it state there's a rent increase in the dockage? At I four C two. As, um, Arthur Sawyer mentioned her first. Earlier. I don't see that in any of this. I see, um, done fudge and increase. I don't see. A hundred percent increase. I just don't see it. So if you could help me, I'd appreciate it.
Page one seventy-four of the packet. Ten dash fifty-five. Use of city-owned marine, commercial marinas.
Okay, so we can't vote on that tonight. Through the chair. Right? Ten fifty-five, we cannot vote on. There's ten fifty-five is not in the newspaper.
That is my understanding.
Okay. It is, it is, even though we put that link in, we didn't specifically put all the sections in chapter ten.
And if I just may comment that on, and, and I, and I would agree that typically when we have a, a code of ordinance change or proposed amendment that's an overhaul. Change to one particular article or section, if the advertisement notes. Um, amendments to section ten. Or, you know, I'm just giving an example here, right? So ten, um, fifty dash fifty. And that's all it states, then that provides notice that that entire section is going to be changed, but because this advertisement was very specific. As to which subsections were going to be discussed tonight. That's why I'm making the recommendation that this be re-advertised.
Okay, so, um. Is it appropriate to, um, to do a motion on what we feel like we need to re-advertise? Then we can continue with the public hearing, um, for the rest of. The material that we have duly advertised. Would that be, that's my question as part of.
Right. So, so, uh, what I would recommend instead is to just take up the matters that are advertised. So you have, you have three things that are advertised that are appropriate to be considered tonight. One, one dash fifteen as was noted. Um.
Okay.
Eleven dash five. And that would be it.
Yep. Ten fifty-two. H. No, sorry. Mute myself.
Um, Counsel Nolan.
Um, I believe we can do the full, uh, first recommendation. Um, the second recommendation is gonna have to be back with the, the first one is one, one, five, um. And chapter ten. And it's one, 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 five. I lose my, we're all over, but I think the first motion we can read. Because I think that that one is actually all right. The second one, we get ten two, ten fifty-four that we can't read. Um, eleven, five, we can, um, and one, five. I, so I, I think that the first motion we can read, the second one, we can't.
Okay, um, can I just interrupt?
I think what happened, um, to the chair, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, I believe if I remember correctly, at O and A, you rescinded the first motion. And that's why the first motion on this template is incorrect. If you go to the O and A minutes, because I went back on it, you rescinded the first motion. And then you voted the second motion, which is on here to add. With the corrections to section ten point fifty-two H as noted and ten fifty-four F to read fifty feet or less than that. And I can pull up the O and A minutes again, um, so I don't believe the first motion. Is a valid motion because you rescinded that motion at O and A. And I apologize for putting that on the template.
Um, with that being said, that I believe that we can read the fir-, the second motion and strike ten fifty-two and ten fifty-four. And that still puts us with a one, one, five and eleven, five.
Okay. Are we comfortable with that, counselors?
Um, TJ, he's, um, has his hand up.
Okay, so I'm gonna suspend the rules of procedure and allow, um, TJ to, um, to speak. Do you want to take a vote, counselors on that? Or may I, um, without objection? Um. Without objection, TJ, you have the floor.
Okay, sorry, procedure here. Uh, some, the ones that are advertised for the sake of time and everyone's. You know, wits, and I know you guys have a whole nother meeting, the, the things that are advertised are so miniscule and eleven, five pertains to ten fifty-four, so passing just those two and. If it's easier for everybody to just re-advertise it all at once. That's totally fine with me. If it's, if, if it's easier on all of you, that's all I wanted to say. It's, it's so miniscule, a lot of them pertain to the other ones. You need to pass them all to make it affect, not all of them, but pairs of them to make them all effective. So that's, that's all I had to say. You can take it all back up at once and it's, if it's clean and if it's easier for you guys.
So, so that would just affect. That this wouldn't be into effect until probably June?
Uh, no.
Um, if, if we were to have the public hearing on April eleventh?
No, it would meet June. There's thirty-one days, so.
Okay, so, so it would still be before Memorial Day, right?
Twelfth. It would be in fact, May twelfth. If it passes April eleventh. Uh, the public hearing, then the thirty-one days would be May twelfth that the ordinance is all of them. If you pass all of them, if they're all approved. Would take it effect to May twelfth.
Um, could there be a vote for possible reconsideration to speed up that timeline? Uh. We had a lot of stuff that takes effect May first. That's, that's the only issue, either yay or nay votes, um, but there's. Signage that's riding on this, this launch passes, there's contracts, there's all kinds of stuff that pertains to these ordinance. So. Would be the only issue, the boat ramp starts up May first, uh, bu- bunches, bunch of things.
Okay.
The only thing that we, um, that Joe, do you want to share what you just shared with me so we can be transparent?
Okay, sure. Um. I was wondering if, if, and Suzanne can weigh in on this, um. You can, when you vote, you can, you can put it in, in like April eleventh, if you feel it, you can declare an emergency. And then this needs to be done, but it has to be like a preamble and that the city council, we, we did it. We did it because of, um, last year, we did it with the, the shellfish warden. And I'm not sure, that's why I'm asking Suzanne, whether we'd be able to follow this procedure. After the city council voted, after it was advertised, that. They sort of like declared sort of an emergency, but it has to be on the charter, um, under the sections that, um. I'm trying to find it right now.
I, I believe that's, that, um, provided that the, uh, it's in accordance with the charter and it, the. We look at that section, um, then I think that would be appropriate. I believe it's done. Here we go, um.
It's, it hasn't been done, but it has been done.
Yeah, same with that. When, when, when there's legislation that, uh, you want to take effect immediately. Um, I've seen that done in many other instances.
What you're saying, we could, um, we could void the thirty-one day wait.
It's not voiding it, it's not voiding it. You're, you're gonna state, um, for the specific reason why you need it to go into if the. The city, uh, council determines that it's important for it to go into effect.
Okay, so if we could do that, um, I guess my question is for counselors, um. Are, are we comfortable following through with, um, TJ's recommendation that we just pause on the whole thing? And, um, and we ask legal and, um, our city clerk to, um, to repost this. Um, and then we just come back for the public hearing on April eleventh. Does that, does that make sense? Um, um, Counsel Gross, your hand is patiently raised.
Uh, didn't you say last night that we have something like, uh, seven public hearings on April eleventh? And are we going to decide to, um. Postpone some of those or what? I mean.
Can you some of those? I, I think.
Only pile so much into a meeting.
Yeah, I, I think that there are certainly some that we could, um, open and continue. Um, I don't think that's a, no.
Can do mine.
Yeah, we could do Joanne's.
I can do, I, I have no problem if you want to continue my vote by mail.
Yeah, and we could, we could probably do the three private road ones, um, not the betterment one, but the, um, the three private roads one. That, um, Counsel Nolan and I, we could continue those. So I, I think that that's fair. Um, Counsel Gross, uh, Grow, and then let's just, uh, make a decision here. Counsel Grow, um, you have the floor.
I, I think we're at the point where we just need to do this the correct way. And the correct way is to re-advertise the whole thing, make sure that people understand what we're voting on. Vote it and get it enacted and let's just, let's just be efficient about this.
Okay, anyone else want to, um, to weigh in before we, um. Um, Counsel Memard, your hand is raised.
At this point, I have to, you know, unfortunately, I have to agree with Counsel Grow. And I would, I would simply request, I think part of the problem here is that the motions is presented for consideration. Are not fully spelled out and presented. They, they need the tables with them. They need, everything needs to be a part of this motion for us to understand and for the public to understand what we have before us. Otherwise, we're, we're juggling a lot of gobbledygook around without any substance. Uh, without the attached schedules. And the change, this is what was being changed, charged, and now this is what's proposed being, you know, the whole thing. Needs to be before it in black and white, and otherwise, we're just digging ourselves into a hole, unfortunately.
So what we need to do before the next meeting, after we post it again. Um, in the newspaper, is we need a redlined version of exactly what the newspaper says. In what every one of these does. So we're, we're adding, we're deleting, it needs to be a red line, we should be able to put it up on the screen, so we're really clear. And the public is clear, and we're absolutely clear. So if that makes sense, um, let's um. Let's agree to do that, and um. So. Um, yeah, I guess. Well, I, so I think I need to. Close the public hearing, because we're, we're, we, we're gonna readvertise, so I don't think there's any need for me to um, to keep it open, correct?
Yeah, I agree.
Does anybody have a problem with that? Cause, huh, alright, I'm gonna close the public hearing. The um hearing is closed, and a plan for the record is that we're gonna readvertise this. Thoroughly, totally, clearly. Um, in the newspaper as soon as possible, so we can get back together on April eleventh. And at April eleventh, we will make sure that um, that we have a very clear, redlined. Um, version to share. I don't think it has to go back to O N A, does it, before? Full council, because we can, we can continue where we left off, we just need clear data, correct? Okay, so, um, right, and we will amend the motions, right, exactly. Alright, I think um, I think this was um. This was helpful, and um I think we, we tried to um. To stick to parliamentary procedure here, and um I, I appreciate it, and um. Thank you for all of your input. So um next, well, um TJ, thank you for being here, and I'm sure. Um, you got lots going on, so, and we appreciate being in your Harvard Masters Conference room right now, we'll make sure we keep it nice and neat, thank you. Um, so next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is public hearing twenty twenty three dash zero one zero to amend Gloucester Code of Ordinance, it's chapter two, division two, key preservation committee.
I'd like to open the public hearing and ask for someone to speak in favor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this uh, this proposal to amend the. Community Preservation Committee was put forward by the um chairperson of the Community Preservation Committee, and what the proposed amendments do is. They bring the um, the section of the, the section of the Community Preservation Committee. Um, up to uh date, and they clarify it.
Okay. Um, anyone else like to speak in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, um, Jill Cahill, the floor is yours.
Uh, uh, thank you, but I was just going to step in, where's Suzanne? Wasn't gonna be here tonight, so I'm all set, we all, I support this, uh, the administration supports this. Um, but now that Suzanne was here, she can explain it, so I'm all set, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is there any communications, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Any questions, councilors? Council Grow?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that I understand that all we're doing basically is, is ensuring that there's a, a member of the community, uh, the um. Open space recreation committee on this, instead of the Parks and Rec, which we don't have, is that correct? I mean, it's, it's really just a. Renaming of a position that we should have on the board as a matter of.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you, any further questions, councilors? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for the committee report. Ordinances and administration.
Yep. On a motion by Council Worthley, seconded by Council Gross, the ordinance administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council amend. Chapter two, division twelve, community preservation committee, as requested. And describing the document attached to General Counsel's February seventeenth, two thousand twenty three memorandum, and I so move.
Motion made by Council Nolan, seconded by Council Worthley, is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Mijota.
Yes.
Council Memmar.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara. Thumbs up. Um, Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes, Council Gross.
Yes.
Yes, this have it, nine in favor, zero opposed, next order.
I say yes, too.
I'm sorry. I don't know why, I'm.
You need to be bigger in your frame, you're so little over there.
Three strikes, you're out.
Okay, I'm sorry, my, accept my apologies. Um, so um, Council O'Neill, yes. Um, the yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
It's for council vote, decision to adopt Main Street number one oh eight, map seven lot fifty one Gloucester zoning ordinance sections one. Point ten miscellaneous special permits, three point one point six B, building heights in excess of thirty five feet. And three point two point six footnote A dimensional requirements for hotel motels. And motor ends and their accessory uses, parentheses, other than signs. Minimum lot area per two guests square foot. Per two guest unit square foot, to convert the second and third floors to a hotel with approximately twelve rooms and lobby.
Is there a motion to adopt?
I'm gonna remove it.
Yep.
Uh, I move the adopted decision for the special counsel permit, special counsel permit, two thousand twenty three dash zero zero one. Main Street number one oh eight, map seven lot fifty one, G Z O sections. One point ten miscellaneous special permits, three point one point six B, building heights in excess of thirty five feet and three point two point six. Footnote A dimensional requirements for hotels, motels and motor ends, and their accessory uses other than signs. Minimum lot area per guest unit square foot to convert the second and third floors to a hotel with approximately twelve. Rooms and a hobby, a lobby, excuse me, a hobby lobby, a lobby, and I so moved.
Motion made by Council Grow, and I believe I heard Council Gross uh seconded. Um, is there a discussion, councilors?
This is, as everybody knows, the downtown hotel.
Thank you, Council Grow. Um, roll call vote. On the adoption, uh, Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Mijota.
Yes.
Council Memmar.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman. Yes, Council Gross.
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed, and I would just like to comment that Deb Ellison, who is the attorney for this, is on the call, listening it. So thank you, Deb. Um, so next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Is the update on the timetable to return to Cairo's auditorium for full city council meetings with a hybrid option. To the public and the possible council vote on timeline in start time.
Thank you. Um, can you screen share the letter from Ryan? So, we received Ryan's letter today. I'm Ryan Knowles, and he gave us a timeline on. Addressing the things that we discussed in our last meeting, when we were talking about when we could get back to Cairo's. And when we would be able to assume true hybrid, which means being back at Cairo's and having. Full Zoom for members of the public to choose which way they'd like to attend, whether present or. Um, remotely, and um. So Ryan came up with um and sent this letter, and although he was at a conference, he was good enough to um. To review it with me, and I wanted to make sure that the councilor saw this. Um, Joanne sent this to you this afternoon. And I will begin to read it while Joanne's screen sharing. Um. To Mayor Greg Berger, copy Jill K L C A O and John Dunn from Ryan Knowles. Hybrid meeting timeline returned to Cairo's. For the request of the council president, I'm writing to outline the current timeline for the arrival. And installation of the audio slash visual equipment that will allow for the running of true hybrid meetings. In both Cairo's, in the council chambers at City Hall. As has been previously outlined. On September twenty first, two thousand and twenty two, the funding for this project was identified. Is coming from the one point five City Hall Improvement Grant, from the State Division of Capital Asset Management Fund twenty five hundred. This funding was formally accepted by the council as part of the January tenth, two thousand and twenty three meeting. And was divided into appropriate accounts on. February ninth, two thousand twenty three. By the CFO and auditor. We still don't have that up here.
You don't?
No, it's the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry, it says.
The timeline allowed for the execution of the contract with our selected vendor, Pro Out. To begin their procurement of this equipment as of February seventeen, two thousand and twenty three. Based on the information that I currently have from our project manager, Pro Out. First bullet, the majority of the equipment is slated to ship in the first week of May. With the exception of new speakers for Cairo's, which will not be shipped until the last week of May, or first week of June. The installation and configuration is expected to take four to five days and will not be scheduled until. We have shipping confirmation for all of the equipment. Based on the current ship date for the speakers, I expect this to be scheduled to begin in mid late June. With necessary training and configuration, no hybrid meeting should be anticipated. Prior to those occurring in the month of June, July, I'm sorry. These speakers are unique in their design and were engineered specifically for the space to reduce echoes and dramatically increase. Intelligibility of speech, so I do not plan on swapping them out for a different model to save a few weeks on this timeline. If you would like to return to in-person meetings in the interim, whether by choice or requirement. The current agreement between sixteen twenty three studios and the city. Provides for their broadcast of city council meetings to both streaming platforms and their regular cable channels. Finally. The plan would not include a hybrid component for either the public or councilor's participants in the meeting to join remotely. Only for members of the public to view the meetings. And the recent past sixteen twenty three staff have provided their own camera equipment. And I've worked with them to greatly improve the audio quality of the meetings. If this were desired, I would suggest opening this discussion with Eric, his team. And myself as soon as possible to ensure that this would be possible. Overall, my belief is that the end result of this process will be worthwhile. As a long-term investment in the space when no corners were cut, for a short-term gain of a couple of weeks. To quote the words engraved on the walls of Cairo's. Built not for today alone, but for tomorrow as well. Sincerely, Ryan Knowles, Director of MIS. Um, and the only thing that I'd like to add to his summary, which is helpful. Um, is that I did ask him today if he thought that. Um, Studio sixteen twenty three, if they, if we were to go back in Cairo's without Zoom. Um. What I asked, you wanna, wanna get rid of this now, so I'm sharing this. Um, what I would ask. For is a recording of the. Video, so in other words, people have an expectation now that they get to see. The recordings perhaps the next day from our Zoom meeting, and I would assume that they'd want that same expectation. If we were going back to the pre-COVID way of Studio sixteen three videotaping. So um Ryan thought that that was reasonable, and we could ask them if they could. Um, help with that, and what they'd have to do is convert the video to like a YouTube document. And then we could upload it onto the city um section, where we, where we post our meetings, our recordings. Um, and that's more convenient from the public. Like seeing that right after the meeting, than to have to go back to the TV method and watch. Either DVD it or um what DVR it, or watch it on um a future. Um. At a future date that's posted in, in cable. So, um, so councilors, I, I guess, you know, last, last meeting, we talked about some motions and what we wanted to do. So, um, do we want to, does someone want to make a motion, and then we can discuss it? Um, in the essence of being timely here. Got a couple of drafts, um, and I think we also have to come up with a. A temporary date for the time of the meeting as well. Um, so. Someone wants to make a motion, the floor is yours. Council O'Neill.
I'll give it a shot. I would like to make a motion, I would move that. The city council continue Zoom meetings until such time as Cairo's auditorium is. Completely set up and ready to go. And I so move.
Second.
Okay, so. Do you have, so can you, can you repeat the motion, councilor, so we're, we're clear?
Yes, I, I move that. City council continue with Zoom meetings until such time as Cairo's auditorium is one hundred percent ready. And I so move.
Second.
Emotions made and it's seconded. Um. So, um, is there a discussion, councilors? Um, on the motion, Council O'Neill.
Yes, um. I think Zoom is fabulous in that people can participate. With the sixteen twenty three studios. That's nice, but it's recorded and you cannot, there's no public participation. So, um. I think it's wise to keep the public participation. And not interrupt that whatsoever. That's my opinion.
Okay, on the motion, councilors. Council Worthley.
Yes, uh, on the motion, and if I could include the, the letter we received from Ryan Knowles late today. Um, so I think that Zoom is fantastic, it has increased our, our participation, and I support. Any me- mess, stuff we can do to keep it. Um, I thought we were working on this since our, we requested working on this back in March, April of last year. And to see the, the talk, I'm, I'm sure the IT work department's working as fast as possible, but something's missing, because. You know, if you remember, the mayor came on and said it was gonna cost eighty thousand dollars to upgrade Cairo's auditorium. That was April of last year. Apparently, that wasn't being worked on until February of this year, so. You know, I, I, that was surprising to me. Um. You know, we had a meeting last night as committee of the whole at Harbor Loop, uh, at the, I'm sorry, Harvard Masters Office, and I thought that. That we. Rose the occasion and, and it's a very pleasant meeting, and, and I, I feel like there's really a lot of value in that. So I wonder why we couldn't do like the school department does, school committee does, and have our in-person meetings, improve that sort of. You know. All the effective communication that happens from body language and tone that doesn't come across on the screen as well. Um, and not meet, meet in person and have. Hybrid, and then when Cairo's is ready, we can open, open up to the public. So I'd rather see that, so. Uh, I, I appreciate the idea of having Zoom technology, but I'd rather us meet in person with Zoom. Even if it's at the Harvard Masters Office.
So. I, I would add that there's a technical glitch with that, because in mid-May. They're gonna take this beautiful office that we're at right now, this conference room, and there's gonna be a. A petition that's gonna go across, because the public has the right to use this room. When the summer season begins. Um, maybe Tony can elaborate on that, but that's what. when the summer season begins. Um, maybe Tony can elaborate on that, but that's what I heard. Um, from our CAO yesterday. So what they're, what they're looking to do right now is, um, they are looking to make the old, our old conference room at Kairos on the first floor. Um, they're going to make that true hybrid for both in-person and the technical enhancements for Zoom at the same time they're doing Kairos Auditorium. So that means that they're running in parallel. And I don't think we're going to be able to stay in here and, um, and I mean, maybe, maybe we could if there was no people. If it was just us, if it was just the nine of us, um, with Joanne and, you know, um, and our attorney. Maybe, maybe we could do that. Tony, do you have a feel for if, if this location, once those walls get um, closed, if, if we can fit in here?
Uh, you're there right now. I mean, you, you could see the size of the space.
I mean, it's, so it's those ones right?
It's big enough for us, yes, but it wouldn't be big enough for the public and, and members of city staff, you know, other than Joanne don't need to be there. They can all be remote.
Okay, so on the motion, Counsel Worthley. You're, you're saying no right now?
I would say no because I, because I think that we could at least do in-person as the council, do Zoom, and then when Hyrus is ready, go in-person with the public. So. I'm voting no because I'd rather be, see everybody in person, um, and not be at my home doing this as much as it's convenient for me. Um, I'd be happy to meet like we did last night.
Okay, um, who else like to speak on the motion? Um, I will speak if no one else wants to on Counsel O'Neill's motion. Um, I'm going to say no to the motion. Um, although I I think we've grown to be comfortable with, with, um, Zoom. I, I think there's a great need for us to be back in person. And, um. I think, I think there was a great difference in how we interacted in a square last night. I thought it was so much nicer just be looking at each other and, um, walking out together. It just felt like the right way that leaders should be. Um, and I'm disappointed that it's going to take longer than we had hoped um, for the full hybrid. Um, but technical things happened. They're having problems with parts. They had issues with contracts, you know, it just, I, I, I believe that they've been trying to work hard to get us there. It's just taken us longer than we would like. So on this particular motion, I will be voting no. Um, anyone else want to speak? Um, Frank, um, the floor is yours.
I'm going to be supporting, um, Counsel O'Neill. I think that you know, as nice as it was meeting in person, I think that you know, we're still able to govern in the, you know, at the Zoom level. And we're not sure if there'll be people on the wall in the room next door to us and whether it'll be difficult for us to be able to communicate or be able to think with the noise level potentially being there. And I think the start time at six PM still needs to be addressed. I think that, you know, we're not considering commuting from where we need to commute. Um, so I wanted to put that into consideration. So I will be supporting, um, Counsel O'Neill and continue the Zoom. Thank you.
Counsel. Anyone else like to speak on the motion? Counsel Gross.
Um, I'm not going to support it only because I don't want to be pigeonholed into a date. Um. I think that we need to keep our options open. If we take no action, we have status quo, which is exactly what, uh, Counsel O'Neill's motion puts forward. So I don't want to, you know, I'm going to vote no because I don't feel that we need to vote to do status quo. You know, that's what we're doing now. Um, and if, you know, I don't want to have to then waste a month, um, of debate time and meetings to try to reverse that um, motion if we, if the opportunity does arise, um, somewhere along the way.
Counsel Grow.
I'm, I've been pretty ambivalent at this point. I, I was a big fan and supporter of being in, in, uh, in Zoom meetings because, you know, as I've said repeatedly, I don't like to leave my house. Um, but you, you know, the, the other side of that coin is, is that I've literally been screamed at in the, uh, in the, in the, in the grocery store asking when we are or demanding when we were going back to, uh, to in-person meetings. And I, and I was, I was lending myself to the idea that maybe we would want to get back to in-person, uh, but if we're not going to be doing in-person meetings with the public, then I'm, I'm kind of in agree with Tony. It's, we're sort of at the status quo and I would like to get back to in-person with public participation as soon as possible. But I'm, 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 I really honestly, I'm fine either way at this point. I'm feeling, I wish I could vote ambivalent, but, um, I think that, uh, I'd like to see us get back to Kairos as quickly as possible. But I don't necessarily see this going back in person as being critical to the, to the process if, if public participation and public presence isn't also part of the equation. That doesn't help anything. I know, I realize.
I'm just not sure what your vote is, so.
You'll have to wait, won't you? I'll just.
Um, anyone else like to speak on Counsel, um, O'Neill's motion? Okay, um, so if, if, if we vote um, yes on this, it means that, um, we are going to continue with Zoom until such time that the Kairos Auditorium is fully ready for both, which would be probably the beginning of July, according to Ryan. So it would be two months, two and a half, four months, three months. Um, okay, roll call vote, Counsel Grow.
No.
Counsel Majota.
No, I'm gonna, no.
Counsel Memard.
No.
Counsel Nolan.
No.
Counsel O'Hara.
Could you repeat the question again?
Okay, um, so, so a yes vote to support Counselor O'Neill's motion is that our city council will continue just the way we are right now on Zoom until such time that Kairos is ready to do true hybrid. So why would you? Okay, yes. Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
No.
Counsel Gilman, no. Counsel Gross?
No.
Okay, so, um, then the motion fails, two in favor, seven opposed. So, um, we can go back right now. We can talk about time or, um, there were some other thoughts that were, were, um, that we put out there. Do we want to, do we want to talk about what we talked about last week? Which was, um, which was to get back at Kairos um, without Zoom. Um, with us in person and the public in person, the old way. Counsel Nolan, are you ready to do a motion?
Um, I'm ready not to talk about time because that's on the agenda coming up.
Well, the problem, don't talk about time. If we don't talk about time, Joanne needs to stop posting public hearing notices effective on April twenty-fifth. So we, we need to, we need to talk about time if for us to be posting that next level of public hearing notices, if it's going to be six or seven.
I, I would say that it'd be status quo at this point still, um, but we did put motions forward to discuss time at a committee level. So again, I feel weird talking about someone's going to be in front of us.
Okay, the motion that, um, the clerk's office gave to us was a, um, a, a move to vote to temporarily move the start time of the meetings to either six or seven. Starting with the April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three or the May ninth meeting. So that's, that was basically their recommendation because at least that would give us the time for public hearings. Um, Counsel Grow.
It seems to me that, uh, as, as Counsel Nolan has pointed out, if, if we do nothing, we, we retain the six PM starting time for, for advertisement purposes until such a time we, we make the decision. And then as soon as we make the decision, either change the time or leave it alone, we set that date starting X date of May, whatever, whatever the date is. And and that way we're, we're resolved to making sure that any public hearing that's been advertised prior to that is advertised for appropriate time. And then we start the, the clock when we've done the decision at O and A. So it seems like, it seems like we're, we're coming down to a final decision of leaving things exactly the way they are, which is we can, we can join you at the Harbor Masters at six o'clock. We can stay home, public can participate until we get a clearer idea of what O and A expects to do and what better timeline on the implementation of the hybrid and sixteen twenty-three, um, issues.
Okay, um. Isn't that kind of what Counsel O'Neill just said she wanted to do?
Well, no.
No, too? I guess I'm a little confused.
Because we can, we can decide, we can decide if, if we, we get a decision from sixteen twenty-three, what they're going to finally be able to do in terms of of that. We can make the decision. I think Tony made the point that we don't want to, we're not going to say that we're going to wait until the final, 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 uh, issue of hybrid is resolved. We can always make that decision in another few weeks if we decide to further discussion at O and A. We're not, we're not tying ourselves down to anything in particular. The big concern it seems to me right now is where, where the, where the public hearing is going to be held and at what time. And if we do nothing at the moment, they're going to be six o'clock on whatever Tuesday night and we can make those advertisements until O and A comes up with a recommendation on time changes.
All right, so, so doing nothing is six o'clock. We can, we continue at six o'clock and we're doing hybrid for the public. Right?
Yeah, so we're not doing anything.
We're doing Zoom, we're doing Zoom, we're not doing hybrid.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you, Counsel Worthley. With the Zoom. Okay. So does someone want to, um, make a motion to say that for now and we can vote that?
I move that we stay the same.
We don't, we don't need a motion. We don't need it.
And nothing's changing.
By default, we're okay. All right. Um, so I guess we, um, exhausted this and, um, um, do you want me to put this back on the agenda in, in four weeks? I mean, there might.
Why, why don't you just put it on for every two weeks? If there's an update, there's an update. If there's not, there's not.
Okay, that's fair.
Now, do you want to spend the last fifteen minutes, twenty minutes of every meeting discussing this for the next?
If there's not an update.
Three months?
No, no, I don't.
Update, we don't have to.
No, I don't.
If it's on the agenda, it will get beat to death.
Right. So, um, we can skip it if we don't like, but there can be a placeholder, right?
Yeah.
Um, okay, so, um, next order of business, Madam Clark.
City Council Statement Regarding the Gloucester Four Hundred Celebration.
I'm going to give, uh, Counsel Grow the floor.
To practice this. Two thousand twenty-three marks four hundred years since the English Dorchester Company landed on our shores. Gloucester sits on the ancestral homeland of the Pawtucket people and their neighbors, the Machusit, Nipmuck, and Pennecook and Wapanoag tribes. Please enjoy the year-long and multiple events throughout two thousand twenty-three, most of which will be free or low cost. Visit Gloucester MA four hundred dot org for a list of upcoming events. Like and share the Gloucester four hundred Facebook page. And to receive major event notifications by email, send a request to info at Gloucester MA four hundred dot org. And with that, I'd just like to uh, highlight a couple of things that are going on in March and, uh, beginning of, uh, of April. Events for the month of March focused on arts and culture. Mark your calendars with just the sampling as we promote the city's offerings. Join us for the last three singer-songwriter challenge on Wednesday nights in Machaca. Come and listen to the panel discussion. The first in a series of discussing the future of Gloucester on March thirtieth. The first topic is the future of our workforce moderated by Isabel Pett on Gloucester stage. The next day, come back and be entertained by Fish Tales Fools at six PM, April first. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, that would be the thirty-first. April first takes us to Hammond Castle for the Oceanside Swing, a tribute to Magnolia's jazz history with the Cape Town Big Band. All events are free to the public. Um, there are also just, I'm going to add a, a little bit here, the three large, three to the public festivals to mark on your calendars are the Gloucester Fisheries Festival, August twelfth through thirteenth on State Fish Pier. The Cultural Heritage Festival, October seventh through eighth. And Indigenous Film Festival, October ninth through fourteenth at multiple locations throughout the city. Our efforts and those of our fifty-seven partners and counting, plus the members of our thirteen-member steering committee and their organizations are all hard at work on behalf of the city. Please attend the events, check our website regularly and provide feedback and kudos to encourage us. It takes a village and we all have a role to play. WWW dot Gloucester MA four hundred dot org. That's it.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clark. Counselor's request to the mayor. Um, so by roll call, Counsel Grow.
Nothing, thank you.
Counsel Majota.
Oh, sure.
Wait a second. Counsel Grow has a second thought.
I'm sorry, I just, I wanted to point out, remind people, uh, that this is not very well-known, I think, by, by a lot of people, but tomorrow is Vietnam Veterans Day, um, March, March twenty-ninth. And, uh, if you know a Vietnam veteran or that Eric, please, uh, take a moment to acknowledge their service, uh, to our country. And that's what I wanted to add.
Thank you. Counsel Majota.
Nothing.
Counsel Memard?
I would just like to urge, uh, first urge everyone here and who's still listening or will watch this again to, uh, take in the Jeff Weaver Exhibition at the Cape Town Museum. It's a phenomenal, uh, tribute to our community, our landscape. And Jeff's, uh, skill as a landscape painter who's, uh, really evolved, uh, in his role here in the community of Gloucester. I have several matters for the mayor's attention, but I'll send those on separately.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel Nolan.
I have no questions for the mayor, but I do want to give kudos to Counselor Grow for bringing up the Vietnam Memorial Veterans Day tomorrow. And, uh, please stop by, uh, Huff Ave and check out the new memorial they have for them. It's beautiful.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel O'Hara.
Nothing, thank you.
Counsel O'Neill.
I have, um, I will send in my request to the mayor, um, by email, but I would like to point out, um, if you will notice how many attendees are online right now at nine forty-one, there's only five people. I can't remember how many were on earlier today. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Worthley.
Sure, I've got a number of things. I'm going to fly through them quickly. Um, Earth Day is Saturday, April twenty-second. I'm not sure if the city does something officially, but we should probably be thinking about what we are might do as a council or as individuals. Um. I understand that there's going to be a new vendor for the beach reservation system. This system came in place because of uh, Counselor O'Hara had initiated a, uh, an effort to um, review parking and, and he asked me to be part of that many years ago, and that was one of the main recommendations he came up with. And I think it worked really well last year. There's a new vendor. I'd love to get an update on, on that if it makes sense. Um, sticking with beaches. We received that, that report from regarding the creek early in, in February and the email we received said, and there will be a presentation before the council. So I'm just continuing to follow up on that. Um, but, you know, yes, we can read the report. The public's asking lots of questions and I think it'd be good to have a presentation. Similarly, um, would it make sense to have another presentation on the crossing, MBTA crossing? It feels like things are quieting down and things are working well there. Be good to hear about that. I've asked before about, um, seniors in the go-bus. Um, last report was that it's going to end on July first. Will we do something about that? And I'd like to get a better, uh, sense in that. Um, a couple of things. The Veterans Department is coordinating with, um, uh, Post Three American Legion, Mark Nestor's group to, um, do Easter morning breakfasts, not breakfast, lunches, I believe it is. And, uh, they're looking for volunteers for that. And then lastly, I just wanted to make a, a personal comment that, um, my objection earlier was never to say that something was being done fishy. I just wasn't sure if there was the perception of that. So I don't want anybody to think that I think somebody did something wrong. I just didn't have to be a perception of that. So Counsel, um, Gilman used the word fishy. I did not think that you did anything that was fishy. So, um, I think it was, it was in good promontory procedure to review that. Uh, I have nothing else right for now. Uh, I have nothing else right for now.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Gross.
I'm all set. Thanks. I created enough trouble tonight.
So, you know, I, I think whenever we have a governance issue like we had tonight, we all learn from it. So I think that that's really important. Um, so let's, let's just get back on the saddle and, and, and do it better in the future. Because it, you know, I think we were really, we, we did a great job on the first public hearing, and then we came to a standstill in the second. And no one likes to be in a position where we're confused and not clear because it's humbling. And I think we're better than this, so let's just, let's just, let's just do it better. And on that note, I, I just wanted to end with a positive note from last night. I thought our governance meeting was excellent. Um, I loved the dialogue. Um, I loved sitting around and looking at everybody. And I think we covered a lot of really important things, so I just wanted to say thank you for that. And thank you to Suzanne and, and Joanne who helped us get through that last night. So, um, on that note, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh my gosh, I'm gonna accept everybody. Um, okay, so we have a second by Tony, and everybody said yes on the motion. Roll call vote, Counsel Grow.
Most definitely.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes, everybody have a great night.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Worthley?
Yes, and thank you.
Counsel Gilman, yes, and Counsel Gross.
Yes, and good night.
Good night, everybody. Thank you, Joanne, for hanging out here with me tonight. Okay.